Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 9th, 2025 New Bern Board of Aldermen Meeting. Before we do the prayer, for those that may not have heard, we lost Commissioner Tom Mark, Craven County Commissioner, passed away earlier this week, so if we would like to have a moment of silence for respect for him. Thank you. Prayer tonight will be given by Alderman Kinsey.
Good afternoon to the New Bern Board of Aldermen. I'd like to ask Pastor Johnson, will he come to the podium, please, to give a prayer?
Thank you, Alderman Kinsey, and to the Board of Aldermen's and all the other official officers that make up this city council. It's just good to be in your presence on this evening. Shall we bow our heads? The songwriter once said, "Without God, I can't do nothing." Just like a ship on the sea without a sail. And without you, our Lord, our heavenly Father, our Savior Jesus Christ, and the Blessed Holy Spirit, we are lost without you. We can do nothing without you. But with you, we can do all things.
Yes, Lord.
So we come on this evening to thank you for waking us this morning, early, somewhere before the break of day. You reached down and you touched each one of us with your finger of love, grace, and mercy, compassion, and power, and breathed fresh breath, life, health, and strength within our soul and body. We were able to rise up, not on our own, but on your mercy and grace.
Yes.
So we want to thank you for allowing our golden moments to roll on over into this You've been with us all through this day, right up to this very point that we have gathered in this meeting. Lord, we come thanks in thee to look upon us. We come as an empty pitcher before a full fountain, looking to you who is an all-seeing God, an all-knowing God, an ever-present God, one that knows us better than we know ourselves, and we want to thank you for who you are.
Thank you, Lord.
You've been mighty good to us in this city, dear God. You allow us to put into place our new stand-alone center, and you allow us together, dear Lord, to put in our community our first community's clinic. If it had not been for you, no way we could have done such ministries, so we say thank you.
And thank you, Lord.
So, Lord, you're God of love, God of order, God of respect.
Yes.
So we come asking you to be in charge over our thoughts, our deliberations, and all that we plan to do as a city, citizens and Aldermen's, and even Mayor. So have your way, Lord, for it's all about you and not about us.
Amen.
In the name of Jesus, we count it done. Amen.
Amen. If you would, please stand with me. We pledge allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with its liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, if you would, please call a roll.
Alderman Prill?
Here.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Here.
Mayor Odom?
Here.
Alderman Kinsey?
Here.
Alderman Best, present.
Okay, Board, item number three is to approve the agenda. What's the pleasure of the Board?
So moved.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. To approve the agenda as is, is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Next is request and petition of citizens. Madam clerk. Just for the public's reference, the timer is still not working, so you should see a timer on the screen, and that is being managed by Ms. Colleen Roberts in the back room, so you'll see the timer there. She has control over that, not us. Okay, first up is Mr. David French.
I am David French at 104 Johnson Street here in New Bern. My email is davidafrench@gmail.com. That's David, middle initial A as in apple, French. My phone number is 252-349-0102. Four days hence, oh, I meant to ask, Alderman Prill said if you would allow me two extra minutes, given the subject matter of what I'm discussing.
That would require suspension of the rules and the Board to vote on that, so would the Board like to grant Mr. French six minutes versus four?
I'm willing to support that.
Is that a motion?
No, that's a motion, yes.
Okay.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I do.
I do as well.
I do as well.
Because you're opening up something that we have rules and regulations and standards.
Okay, before, let's, just for the record, let's do a roll call, starting with Alderman Prill, please.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
No.
Alderman Kinsey?
No.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
No. It's tied 3-3, so the rules will suspend. I'm sorry, the rules will continue, so, Mr. French, you have four minutes, 3:18 remaining.
Okay, can you restart the clock since we had to go through all that?
She's, I thought she stopped, but that's fine.
Thank you.
You can have it with four minutes, sir.
Four days hence will mark seven very long years since Hurricane Florence hit our beloved New Bern in eastern North Carolina on September 13, 14, 2018, and changed so many of our lives forever. My dear cousin Mary Ann, a stroke survivor, and I rode out the hurricane in her walk-up attic as the floodwaters engulfed and rushed into her home. What many people do not realize is that there are still thousands of us here in eastern North Carolina who are still not back home due to the absolute failure of former Governor Roy Cooper, President Governor Josh Stein, and their cohorts, Eddie Buffalo, Laura Hogted, Matthew Arland, Prior Gibson, Michael Cullen, and others, to properly administer the Rebuild NC program. It seems Josh Stein, as Attorney General, never investigated Rebuild. In 2019, we were told by FEMA that they were going to repair Cousin Mary Ann's home. They lied. In 2020, we entered the Rebuild NC program that was funded with almost $1 billion in federal taxpayer HUD funds. In 2022, after waiting almost two years, with no significant progress from Rebuild NC, we went to our elected officials and also spoke to Lisa Sorg, the investigative reporter, who exposed the corruption and mismanagement of the Rebuild program. In September 2022, the first hurricane hearing at the NC Legislature was held. They have failed to hold meetings every three months as promised. In October 2022, very sadly, my dear cousin passed away. While I did my best to shield her from the stress of it all, the effects of having to move three times in her 80s and not being back in her beloved home took its toll on her. We have only made it through all this with the help of the good Lord, our family, and friends. In May 2023, I signed an agreement with Rebuild NC for them to build a home to replace Cousin Mary Ann's. They were told repeatedly since 2020 that the home was in the New Bern Historic District and that it must adhere to all local, state, and federal guidelines. They said it would, they lied. In August 2024, Rebuild NC went before the New Bern Historic Preservation Commission with a home design that they were told would not be acceptable. The New Bern HPC voted it down as expected. In November 2024, Rebuild NC tried to kick me out of the program because I went to my elected officials and gave a front-page interview to Luciana at the News and Observer about the failure of Rebuild NC. In February 2025, Rebuild NC illegally and fraudulently kicked me out of the program, stopped in all storage, and stifled payments, which they are contractually obligated to supply until I'm back home. I would have never needed one cent had they done their jobs properly years ago. I appealed, and they have never responded, which they are legally required to do so. Over the past seven months, there have been talks between the City of New Bern, Craven County, and Rebuild NC about transferring my home project and others to Craven County to do the work, but Rebuild NC has failed to do that. Craven County has 40 years of success in elevating and repairing damaged homes. Since November 2024, I have done my best to work with Representative Steve Tyson, who was great after the hurricane, until some months ago, and Senator Bob Brinson, but for some reason, they are not willing to truly fight for me and the thousands of eastern North Carolina people who are still suffering. They both have excluded me from Rebuild NC meetings about my life and my home. I finally had a meeting with Rebuild NC, Tyson, Brinson, and others, a month ago today in Raleigh. I have repeatedly asked for an update at another meeting with no response from any of them. Unacceptable and unprofessional they are. We, the hurricane flood survivors, have no one representing us. Only the state auditor is working on a investigation. I am facing losing my uninhabitable home, my temporary apartment, and my storage due to the failure of Rebuild NC and my North Carolina elected officials. President Donald Trump walked right in front of our home in 2018 with New Bern native Linda Edwards-McMahan. Like President Trump told the LA Fire Survivors, their home should be built back bigger, better, and more beautiful. I think he would say the same for us here in ENC and WNC.
Thank you, Mr. French.
I have asked my elected officials, Tyson, Brinson, Murphy, Tillis, and Bud-
Thank you, Mr. French.
-to please contact President Trump and the HUD Secretary to step in and fix the Rebuild debacle. They have not done so.
Mr. French, time's up.
We just want to go home. My daily prayers are for us here in ENC and those in WNC who are suffering under a tyrannical North Carolina government. I will not yield. Y'all must do something.
Thank you, sir.
Next up is Ms. Soraya Bliss.
I'm Soraya Bliss, and I have a little survey for you. It's not just for the Aldermen, it's for everyone in the room. Question one, how many of you think you could keep a straight face if you had to tell a contractor who is about to paint your house that they could not use motorized sanders? Question number two, how many of you think the contractor would still sign up to do the job? Question three, if the contractor didn't walk away laughing at you, how much more do you think the job would cost? HPC Guideline 6.1.6 says, "Remove paint and other loose material with scrapers, sandpaper, and similar moderately abrasive hand tools." Yes, hand tools. Translation, no motorized sanders are allowed in the historic district. Bonus question, who among you would paint a brand-new outdoor appliance knowing it could void a warranty? Fun fact, painting an appliance, a Reni, actually does void the warranty. If you haven't guessed it already, I'm here to talk about the HPC, as I have been for the last six months. While some progress has been made, the resistance to incremental guideline improvements remains a concern, and it does not put the public interest first. I understand that a meeting is scheduled next week with the City Manager, Staff, HPC Chair and Vice Chair to discuss the HPC Guideline Revision Process. I encourage all of you, the public included, to weigh in and push for a process that includes incremental change. The stated reason for holding all changes to the very end is to mitigate the risk of unintended consequences. However, this does not seem to stand. The HPC has made several incremental changes in the past, and the required processes for an HPC text amendment includes a review by both legal and planning and zoning. These are built-in safeguards to reduce errors. Incremental progress is a proven strategy across disciplines. Not holding up good-for-great emphasizes delivering functional solutions now rather than continuing to stall. Applying these principles to historic preservation would allow pain points that have been ignored for years to be addressed. Further, this approach actually helps catch issues early and generally improves overall process as well as public engagement. Is it really fair to ask homeowners and businesses to wait another six months or another year to see change? Telling the public their feedback matters, but then turning around and delaying action undermines confidence and trust. How is that good governance? Also, hiring a consultant is a luxury, not a necessity. The guidelines need updates, not a costly do-over. Use existing resources and public support and get changes done now. If you can afford an upgrade later, fine, but don't make this critical work dependent on a line item in next year's budget or anything else that will slow things down. The public deserves proactive, trust-building approach with immediate change. Thank you. Since I have a few seconds left, I would also like to add that the HP also just required the N-COR to replace all wood siding, remove 100% of the vinyl siding on a house, and restore the existing wood siding. They got to that by looking at the one side that needed vinyl replacing. They determined that was wholesale, according to the guidelines, rather than looking at the whole house. I've reported that to you guys a couple of months ago. I don't believe anything's been be done, but that's a big problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Board, next up is the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the Board on items five through 16?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Have a motion and a second. Second was Alderman Astor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Next is item number 17, Presentation of the Police Department's 2024 Annual Report. Chief Gallagher.
Thank you, Mayor. Board, City Manager, I promise you, my presentation will be left in 10 minutes, and I will fulfill that promise. So I am here to present to the Board the 2024 Annual Report that was provided to this Board last month. Just for clarity purposes, this document was actually completed midsummer, but we waited until the next Board meeting to present this to you. So, one of the issues that we as a team put together was we wanted to tell our story. Far too often, our community sees the wonderful officers in uniform, and they assume they know what we do. Unfortunately, that is the proverbial tip of the iceberg, and so it is incumbent upon us to tell that story to our community so that they understand exactly what it is that the New Bern Police Department does. What I provided here in this slide is our organizational chart. Of the 118 and a half abilitated positions in the New Bern Police Department, over, well, roughly a third of those are civilian staff. And in this organizational chart, any of the squares that you see there that have a yellow outline represents a civilian employee. They are every bit as important and critical to the mission of the New Bern Police Department as those that wear the uniform and have sworn authority. Also critically important to our mission is our volunteers and our contractual workers, such as our RHA coresponders, who work in our same building and respond with our officers to deal with people in crisis. Hopefully, we can divert them from the criminal justice system into services that they need with respect to their mental health. This is a very busy slide, and it was constructed to be exactly that. The printed version of our annual report that you have is roughly 80 pages long. It is not mandatory reading, but what I encourage most people to understand is each and every entry in there was specifically intended to provide that story, and we've tried to use the words of our community and the words of our employees to speak about what exactly we have done and what we will continue to do to service our community. Now, oftentimes, our community, our citizens, and special interest persons and groups are interested in what our crime rate is, and that is a critically important piece to any police department's annual report, and I'm here to relay that as it relates to the reportable crimes, we have seen a dramatic decrease in not only Part I violent crime, but also Part I property crimes. And if you could see the bottom total, in 2024, we had a total of 757 reportable Part I crimes that were reported to the FBI. That is significantly lower, and by percentages, roughly 20% decrease in violent crime and also almost 32% in property crimes. The other issue that I would like to point out and celebrate is the amount of clearances that our staff has resulted in investigations and homicides and murders. There is a difference. In 2021, we had eight homicides, but two of those were non-criminal. They were justifiable homicides, so it was only six murders. We have a clearance rate of 64%, and we are extremely proud that we were able to clear the 2023 July 4th Neil O'Leary Sheptok homicide. Our clearance rate is by far higher than the average in the state of North Carolina. And last but not least, and to fulfill my promise to my boss that I would be less than 10 minutes, the New Bern Police Department will celebrate with the rest of the country and our community the nation's 250th birthday. One of the salient guiding principles of American government is the 56 words in the Declaration of Independence that speaks to inalienable rights. This is proudly displayed in the New Bern Police Department. Our officers understand where inalienable rights come from and where we as government agents stand in support of that. We wish that all people have the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and that is the core feature of why we exist as police officers. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does the Board have questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next up is item number 18, Conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance to establish initial zoning for 2960 Old Airport Road as R8. Ms. Ru.
Thank you so much. Nobody ever asked me to stick to 10 minutes.
Feel free to.
Thank you. I am going to do my best to go very efficiently through five zoning requests here this evening. This, we're starting off pretty vanilla, so we'll dip our toes in. This is a property that we just annexed in in July. It is out at 2960 Old Airport Road. Currently doesn't have zoning because we just brought it in the city limits. It's just under three acres. We are proposing R8 zoning for this area. You see on the vicinity map, we are just slightly north of that crossing at Bryce's Crossing Boulevard and Old Airport Road. Proof of notice. The area in yellow, as I always show you, are those who are in within 100 feet, who received written notice as required by our ordinance. The R8 zoning district is a basic one- and two-family residential district. It does allow multifamily on larger sites. This is our existing conditions. You can see there's plenty of R8 right there in and around the subject property, which is highlighted in dark red. Here you can see an aerial, you can see that parcel stand out just a little bit better. This is a picture of the site. The Planning and Zoning Board did recommend application of R8 zoning on this property. They recommended this to you, 7-0, based on consistency with the land use plans, state laws, and our land use plan update. With that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Does the Board have questions? Hearing none. At this time, I will open a public hearing on item number 18. If you would like to come forward to speak on this item, please do so at this time.
May I make a motion to close the public hearing? Second?
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. The Board is now expected to consider adopting the ordinance to establish this initial zoning. What is the pleasure of the Board on item number 18?
May I make a motion that we adopt the ordinance to establish initial zoning for 2960 Old Airport Road as R8. Second?
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Next up is item number 19, Conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance to rezone 1700 Red Robin Lane from I-1 to C-3. Ms. Ru.
Thank you. This rezoning request was submitted by New Bern Wash LLC. Owner of the property is Stephen Umstead out of 1700 Red Robin Lane. It is currently zoned I-1. The proposed zoning requested is Commercial 3 or C-3. It is 1.84 acres. This is our vicinity map here. You can see, if you're familiar with this, kind of turning into Lowe's where the car Here's proof of notice, proof of mailed notice to adjacent property owners. To compare the two districts, they actually allow really similar things, the big difference being the setbacks, which I've listed here and illustrated on the screen for you. Moving from Industrial 1 to Commercial 3 would relax those setbacks significantly. The Commercial 3 is one of our very typical commercial districts, office, personal services, retail, those types of things. You can see on the use chart, they are pretty similar in uses. The big difference here would be those setbacks. You can see there's plenty of C-3 in the area. This was a very simple rezoning request for the Planning and Zoning Board to report. The gray area is the I-3, and all that other red down MLK is C-3. Our future land use map does support this as developed, so it is supportive of the request. This is our aerial image. This shows you that the site is currently undeveloped, and the Planning and Zoning Board did recommend approval of this rezoning request, 7-0, based by consistency with our adopted plans and the fact it is adjacent to so much C-3. With that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Board have questions? I have one, Ms. Ru. If you could go back to the current aerial.
Oops. Okay, I might need Colleen to help me.
Colleen might need some help. There she comes. We need to go backwards, sorry. That one right there.
Thank you so much.
So, the one picture shows that it's undeveloped, but that is the new car wash that's in that picture, right?
That's behind it.
Okay, I guess I'm confused, because what I'm looking at on the screen right now with the red border around it-
Mm-hmm.
the red border around it, that's the parcel we're talking about, right?
Yes, yep.
Is that not the new car wash that I'm looking at?
You are looking at the new car wash that it can be subdivided.
Okay.
So only half of that parcel, yes. Okay, I'm sorry, that wasn't cleared. Good question.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, at this time, I will open a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please come forward now.
May I make a motion to close the public hearing? Second?
Have a motion and a second to close a public hearing. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. What is the pleasure of the board on item number nineteen?
May I make a motion to adopt an ordinance to rezone seventeen hundred Red Robin Lane from I one to C three?
Second?
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alder McKenzie.
Alder McKenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Freel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next is item number twenty, conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance to establish initial zoning for seven fifty Highway fifty-five West as R twenty, R ten, R ten S, or R eight. Ms. Rue.
Thank you. This is another zoning application where this is before you, due to an annexation. This was annexed back in January. The location is seven hundred fifty Highway fifty-five West. The owner is Tanya Dillahunt. And there are four different zoning districts listed as possible and were noticed for possible applications. And I will explain to you why that is, since this is a little bit outside of what we usually look at. I will note the Planning and Zoning Board is recommending to you the R twenty application of zoning. And I'm going to call attention to the size of the parcel because that will be important as we move through this presentation. So you can see we have just under an acre here that is spelled out in regular math, forty thousand nine hundred and forty-six square feet. This is the location of the property that we are talking about this evening. This is the sign showing our posted notice. And this is our proof of mail notification. And we have a chart here that staff put together for us that shows the difference between these four zoning districts. And when we look at what's currently on the zoning map, this will make sense why I'm explaining this. So we have R twenty, which is a very rural residential zoning district, twenty thousand square feet. We have R ten, which is a more dense residential district that allows single-family homes and single-family attached homes, or what we might consider duplex. We have R ten S, which is the same lot size, but only allows single-family residential, not duplex, not apartments. Or we have residential eight, which is what is the preference of the property owner. R eight now, I'll call to your attention, is eight thousand square feet lots, but also allows multifamily uses or apartments. And on a parcel that size, you could potentially get up to nine units. R twenty, as I just referenced, is a rural district for single-family homes with larger lot sizes. R ten, we're cutting the size of potential subdivision lots down to ten thousand square feet and allows single-family homes and duplexes. The R ten S, which allows ten thousand square feet and single-family homes only. Or the residential eight, which has the smaller lot sizes, single-family or multifamily. So you take the eight thousand, and if you add four thousand on, that's how if we math the math I just walked through, you could potentially get up to nine units. And please remember, we have to look at the whole range of what's possible on a property when we consider rezoning. But this is our existing zoning map. These are the conditions on the ground. And so we've got agriculture out there. We have properties that aren't zoned by the city. They're not in our limits, so we don't have control over those. And you'll see a little piece up to the left of the screen, to the northwest there of R six. So the very light yellow are the other things that are zoned R twenty. And so when we were reviewing this, and when the Planning and Zoning Board was reviewing this, they looked at that and were highly concerned that throwing any other district on there could potentially look at as spot zoning. And so we've met with the property owner's attorney, and we've talked through various options with them. And they were given the option after Planning and Zoning Board to submit evidence potentially of case law that may show this is not spot zoning. We have not received that to date. I'm sure you'll hear from their legal counsel shortly, and they may have that information for you. This is an aerial image of the subject property. This is an illustration of what's physically out there right now. And again, the Planning and Zoning Board did recommend application of the R twenty zoning. However, the notice did go out with the potential that one of those other zoning districts, the R ten, the R ten S, the R eight, could potentially be options. And the reason we advertised it like that is so if you weren't comfortable with the R twenty, then you would have those other options of evidences presented to you. They did find that the R twenty was consistent with the land use plan update, what was in the vicinity, but did note that there were.
Hold on a second. Is that a telephone? Or is a baby monitor? Sounded like a lullaby.
So first.
All right.
And with that, I'm happy to answer questions for you. I know this was a little more confusing than we normally walk through, so.
Okay, does board have questions?
Jessica, what staff recommending?
On this property, staff is recommending, based on consultation with our legal counsel, R twenty.
And then you mentioned apartments, then you said homes, and then you went back to say that it could go either R ten or R eight?
Those, yes, those are all.
Due to what the attorney's gonna bring before us?
Yep.
Get a chance to review if it's been some changes. Is that correct?
So typically, spot zoning, if it's a very large piece of property out somewhere, it's, and you can subdivide, you're doing a subdivision or something like that, it's not looked at as spot zoning. We look at what's in the vicinity. When we talk about vicinity in the staff report, we typically reference a half a mile radius. The law doesn't specifically tell you, and our ordinance doesn't specifically tell you what vicinity is. But on a small piece of property, and we're talking about under an acre, it is highly likely that the courts would look at just slapping one small piece like that a different color as spot zoning.
Okay, so I guess we'll see what the attorney has to present us.
And I might actually go backwards again if it's not too much.
Uh-oh. I'm going to try. Here we go, yep. Where do you want, where would you like to land?
To the current zoning, right there, that one, with the map of what the current zoning. Here you go. So just to clarify, everything that's in white is unzoned?
Yes.
Is it in the city limits?
No. This is an area, you know, we get these piecemeal annexations, which is how we got this before us this evening.
Okay, so maybe the attorney can answer this one for me. How would it be considered spot zoning when there's parcels all around it that are unzoned?
Great question. So when we're looking at zoning, we're looking at comparable land uses, right? So when we compare the county's regulations with setbacks, those types of things, that analysis places us very close to the R twenty zoning designation. Additionally, when we're looking at properties or parcels that are within the municipal boundary, for example, across the street, we see that large section of A five. We look up the corridor a bit, and we see the R twenties. That is how we're looking at not having a spot zoning argument because it is contiguous under the statute to parcels that are in the municipal boundary that are zoned.
So theoretically, if any of the neighboring property owners were to come before the board and petition to be annexed and asked to be R six, they would eventually start building a coalition of the same zoning there. Is that fair?
They could potentially, you know, R six may be more, probably a better analysis, closer to the yellow shaded area towards the top left corner of the map. Those parcels that are closer to the right side of the map may have a harder, a tougher hill to climb to try to argue for an R six.
Okay.
Another question?
Yes, sir.
When she mentioned R ten and R eight, is that due to the setback of the density of the property? I'm trying to understand that.
It's my understanding that the property owner and his attorney have proposed some alternatives to R six, I mean to R twenty. They have some specific uses in mind that might work better with a R six, R twenty, R six, R ten zoning designation, and they can speak to that. But certainly from your perspective, when you're assessing what uses or what zoning classification is reasonable and consistent with our land use plans, you want to review all of the possible uses that are permitted for that zoning classification.
So, yeah, Jessica, you said that the R eight would, you could possibly put nine units. Are you saying nine houses or nine?
No. You could potentially build a multi-unit structure of nine units or an apartment, or subdivide it into four lots and put four houses there because of the land acreage they have and the lot widths that are required when you make new lots out of an existing larger parcel.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, at this time, I will open a public hearing. This is on item number twenty. If you would like to speak forward, please come forward this time. I'll just give you mine whenever we're done.
My name is Gary Clemmons. I'm a lawyer with Chestnut and Clemmons in New Bern. And I have practiced law here since nineteen eighty-five. I represent the actual land owner, who is Tanya Dillahunt, and she lives in Texas. Her father is Jimmy Dillahunt, and he is here. He has a recorded power of attorney in the Register of Deeds office to act on her behalf. So I actually represent both of them. The landowner, among all the options, prefers R eight for four reasons. One, it meets the requirements of R eight, and I'll go in more detail in a minute. Number two, it meets the guidelines under fifteen dash one thirty-six, which interestingly enough, when I looked at these guidelines, there are five of them, and they're divided into whether or not it's to encourage, discourage, or prohibit. So the language had two encourages, two discourages, and one prohibition, which I thought was kind of interesting how they set that up. But it meets all those five guidelines. Third, the application for the R eight itself blends in with the vicinity, and I'll show you some maps I have on that. And fourth, it has the support of the community, and I have a petition. May I submit this? This is a petition from a hundred people. Forty-four of them live in the Pleasant Hill community. The other ones live outside the Pleasant Hill community. And it's basically, they're in support of the landowner's position to have this zone R eight. Sorry, only have that one copy. So if you look at the requirements of R eight, which is residential, it does talk about either single or two or multifamily dwellings. And I understand that you are supposed to review it as to what any potential use of the land might be or the development might be. But that's not what's going to happen, and I understand you have to analyze it that way. But what Mr. Dillahunt and his daughter propose is that they want to build single-family units, okay? They're twenty-five feet wide. Each of these lots in seven fifty Highway fifty-five West are at least ten thousand square feet. They're also at least fifty feet apart on the proposal, and they have at least seventy-two point eighty feet of road frontage. The actual requirements of R eight is that they have a minimum of eight thousand square feet for one of the lots, and then a minimum of four thousand square feet for the other one. Now, I'm also going to be up here in a minute talking about the next one, which is seven ninety-four Highway fifty-five, which is one tract. This is one tract that he wants to divide into four, surveyed four separate lots for four separate houses, fifty feet apart on the houses. I understand that you're supposed to review it in light of what all the potential possibilities are, but that is not the plan of this particular landowner. So it meets all the actual requirements. So the next requirement is, does it meet the guidelines of R eight? So if you look at the guidelines under fifteen dash one thirty-six of R eight, the two that talk about encouraging are to encourage the continued use of the land for residential purposes. Well, it's going to be residential purposes. And the third one is to encourage the discontinuance of existing uses that would not be permitted as new uses in the district. So there, I'm going to show you a map in a minute, but this is an area, one mile radius going one mile out from this project includes R twenty, R eight, R six. I mean, it just includes everything. I'll show you in a minute. If you look in your packet that you have there, there are in number two, A, B, and C, you will see some pictures and how some of these houses are going to look that Mr. Dillahunt has already given. The two guidelines having to do with discouragement are to discourage any use which would generate traffic on minor streets other than the normal traffic. Well, this is Highway fifty-five, so it's not going to make any difference there. Or the other one to discourage is any use which, because of its character or size, would create requirements and cause for public services and increase fire protection and stuff like that. It's not going to do that. The last one is a prohibition. Prohibition to prohibit commercial and industrial use of the land and to prevent it, to prevent any other. Prohibition to prohibit commercial and industrial use of the land and to prevent it, to prevent any other use which would substantially interfere with the development of continuation of, of residential uses in the district. So it doesn't do that 'cause it's residential. So it meets the two parts of encouragement, the two parts of discouragement, uh, and the prohibition. It was mentioned here earlier about some, uh, uh, case law regarding spot zoning, uh, which I'm going to put under the category of the senate. It is untrue that I didn't submit any case law to council for the city. I did. Question is, like all lawyers, what does the case law have to do and is it, it is applicable to what we're talking about? So first, um, here, I don't know, I don't know if y'all can see this or not. My distances between where I stand generally in juries is closer, um, but it will just have to go with what we're doing. So this is kind of the area right here, and these four green blocks are the proposed structures. They're fifty feet apart, they have at least seventy-two, uh, feet more than that for the road frontage. And, uh, not only is one more than eight thousand and the rest more than four thousand, but they're all more than ten thousand square feet, so they meet that. So the second part I want to talk about is the, uh, vicinity. So if you look at, and I, I believe in your, um, materials there, if you look at, um, the outlines in number three. You look at number four, zip four. So you will see, uh, on the red, uh, dot there, the subject property. And then that's the vicinity of one mile outside of the subject property, which there are areas of, uh, R twenty across the street, there are areas of R six, there's a R ten A, R fifteen, R ten, R eight, and R twenty. So to say that it's not consistent with what's out there already because there are a lot of R twenties, there's also a lot of other things. But it meets the requirements of R eight and it also meets the guidelines. I, I did, uh, submit, uh, two cases. I do not have the cases with me that I submitted, Childress versus Jackin County and Mucie versus Town of Shiloh. Um, they did not really address the issue of spot zoning as much as they addressed the issues of when you're, when you work on zoning and make decisions about zoning, taking into consideration the vicinity and the, the cases involved. One case involved the vicinity of dry land and water, and the other one involved a one-mile radius that they considered the area that they would, um, look at in terms of what kind of zoning it would be. And that's why I cited the cases. I did not find, uh, in my research, any specific cases regarding spot zoning that would affect this particular case. So in terms of the area, it fits into the area, um, and blends there. Uh, the fourth reason, uh, is because it has the support of the community. I have a hundred, um, signatures here, forty-four of them are people who live in Pleasant Hill. Uh, uh, all of y'all know what Pleasant Hill looks like, it's a hodgepodge of a lot of stuff out there, some rural, some not. But, but I think that the, the nicest part of this, uh, is that, uh, the Dillahunts really wanna do something nice. They wanna, they wanna have four structures on this one and one structure on the other one. Uh, single-family, um, you know, not, uh, priced so high that some people can't afford it. Uh, and to have, and to make them nice, I mean, they're, they'll be nice out there where there's a lot of structures, houses out there, not so nice. And just make it available and affordable for a lot of people, or at least four home, uh, four houses or four families who can live there, and that's what his purpose is. So although you have options between twenty, uh, ten S, ten, and, um, um, uh, R eight, the property owner submits that R eight best suits his purposes. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions?
Yes. So early on, the, the, the standard that they were looking at now, it seems that he's up to par now in having everything correct. Is that correct now?
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question.
Okay, early on, when she was saying, uh, the, what we was looking at was R twenty, but now he's up to standard to bring it up to R eight to fit in to, to, he's submitting now the correct documentation to go forward in his building.
Well, actually, in the beginning, when I got in the case, we did meet with the planning board. I went over there to the office, we sat down, we kinda looked at all the maps. And so, um, uh, R eight, uh, was one of the original, um, positions that the landowner had. Now, while we were in there, we also talked about, uh, R ten and possibilities with R ten. Of course, with R ten, you're gonna have to reduce your, your lot sizes. So for example, uh, if you have, um, an R ten, uh, in the tract that we're talking about, you're gonna have three lots rather than four because of the requirements. Uh, those would be, you know, close to between ninety-seven and ninety-eight feet for each one of them. They, they'd still be fifty feet apart, but it, it reduces the number of single-family dwellings from four to three. And I think the Avis, yeah, Avis Engineering did all of these, and I used them a lot too. But R eight was one of the options in the beginning. So we went to the hearing, um, with the, um, the zoning board, uh, and the kind of, our pres- our presentation was for R eight kinda primarily, but, you know, like a lot of things, you, you, you don't want to, you wanna have alternatives, you wanna have Plan B and Plan C and Plan D if you can, if you can get it. So, but number eight was our priorities, our priority, because we can get four houses on there and one on the other.
Question to you. From what they presented, are they in where they need to be now in order to have this to pass?
No.
Why not, when he's just said that, um?
He did a wonderful job walking through all the guidelines and requirements for R eight. We don't have any other R eight out there near that. That does not change the high concern that we in our legal team have that this is looked at as spot zoning because of that.
So you're saying that now it becomes spot zoning?
Yes, and perhaps Alderman Kenzie, I might be able to be helpful. The, the facts are important to remember when you're thinking about zoning. We're looking at compatibility with adjacent zoning classifications and uses, and we're also looking at reasonableness, okay? So in order to look at adjacent uses, you have to figure out how far from the subject parcel are we willing to look. Staff is saying that you should look a half a mile away from a parcel that's less than an acre. Mr. Clemmons is arguing, on the other hand, that you should look at least a mile out. The cases that Mr. Clemmons has referenced give us some parameters about what the rules should be, 'cause it's not a bright mind test. The cases that Mr. Clemmons has cited are generally large parcels, fifty-one, fifty-seven, fifty-eight acre parcels, where the court has said, if you look a, a mile away from a fifty-acre parcel, that's reasonable, and you should consider all of those uses. But those are not our facts on this particular zoning application. Our facts here are, we have a less than one acre parcel that's very small, especially with, when we compare it to the adjoining parcels. There's large pieces of land on that highway fifty-five west corridor. So when we look at what we have, staff is arguing, and our legal department, um, agrees with staff, that we should look no more than a half a mile around the subject parcel.
Not a mile?
Not one mile, because of the size of the subject parcel. If the parcel was much larger, we would look at a larger radius. When the parcel is small, we must look at a smaller radius to make sure that we don't find ourselves in a legal spot zoning analysis.
Sure. Question, what about R ten, that's larger?
Yes, R ten lot would be larger than an R eight lot.
Okay.
And also, we have to think about all the permissible uses. So the biggest distinction here between R twenty and R six, I mean, R eight, other than the size of the parcels, is R twenty requires single-family housing. R eight permits multifamily uses. And when you drive down that corridor, when you're thinking about compatibility and consistency with adjacent uses, you wanna ask yourself, how many apartment buildings do I see on highway fifty-five west? You wanna ask yourself, how many duplexes do we see? How many single-family residences do we see? And we wanna take those facts into our analysis to make sure that the zoning classification that is assigned is compatible with the uses that we see on the ground.
The setback, it, basically you're seeing the size of the property in general.
Is one of the factors that we look at when we try to figure out how far away should we look at compatible land uses.
So, um, so can I respond to that? I have two arguments about that.
Yeah, let, go ahead and respond, then Alderman Best is next.
Right, so one, uh, within the half-mile radius, there are restrictions of R six, which are even greater restrictions than R eight within a half-mile radius, and there are two big ones of those. Second, the, the reason that I cited the case is because I couldn't find a case where you used vicinity and going out a half a mile in a smaller tract. So I used what the Court of Appeals gave me in terms of being able to utilize an, a one-mile area to go out. The facts of the case was a larger tract, but the court did not say it was limited to larger tracts. It just says, this case is a large tract, but it did not limit it to larger tracts. Didn't say, this case is limited to larger tracts only, okay? So that also means that you can use at your discretion to go out a mile. And if you go out a mile, it has R eight, which is in my plan's exhibit number four on the right-hand side, within the one-mile parameter.
Senator, Alderman Best?
Yes, Jessica, excuse me, sir, um, Ms. Rue. So, for clarity here, recommendations is R twenty. Now, if we go with any other, uh, recommendation of ten, ten S, and eight, then it would be considered spot zoning?
Yes, although cutting it in half seemed to the planning board to possibly offer to you as a more palatable option.
Okay.
So the difference here, we've seen, is being able to subdivide at R twenty, which is recommended for, for legal reasons from the planning and zoning board, not because they don't support this idea, but for legal reasons, they look out for the best interest of the city, is R twenty. You could subdivide that parcel into two pieces. And, and they very diligently debated the R eight and didn't necessarily, they have a problem with subdividing something into, to four lots out there. They have to consider all the things you have to consider when they make their recommendation. They are hung up, as, as we are this evening, on what spot zoning is and how we're looking at this. And this is, i- in the grand scheme of things, a very small piece of property that could be subdivided into four much smaller pieces in an area with typically the larger lots around it that's pretty rural.
So with that, all of that being said, if we, uh, I mean, we as a board agree to R eight, then we're opening up a can of worms here for future pieces of property in this same location that's all classified under R twenty, um, and R ten to actually come up with the plan to, okay, well, I want to rezone my property and I'm gonna make it R eight.
If you were to do that this evening and take that spot zoning risk, it would be easier for future people to come ask for R eight.
In your opinion, to protect the city against spot zoning, do you recommend R twenty zoning?
I would say it is very difficult, from our perspective, to defend R six, given the small size of this particular lot and the fact that the parcels to the immediate northwest and the immediate east and across the street do not have the same density that R eight would allow. It would be very difficult to defend.
I have, I have a question. When I'm looking at our, oh, I'm sorry, the zoning map that council presented, even if you don't go out a mile, uh, if you look at Washington Post Road, there's a C five that is right in the middle of R six. Do we know, I'm sure you probably don't, this is putting you on the spot, but do we have any idea of when and how that was owned? Because that's a, to me, that's a perfect example of spot zoning if there ever was one.
I'm not familiar with that, with that property.
It, it, it's, um, if I remember correctly, it's a residential house that is used for a commercial purpose. And it's, everybody see what I'm talking about on his map, the blue C five that's right in the middle of R six? And then I get the argument about going out only a half a mile, um, based off of the land size, but you don't even have to go a half a mile based off of this scale on this map. Uh, you can go point two and you're at R six. And for me, what, what's really bothering me about this is the fact that there's so much unzoned property around it. I meant, let me ask you this, when, when was this annexed then?
January.
January? Is zoning required for building permits to be pulled?
If it's unzoned, then no.
So theoretically, the client and the owner could have pulled building permits and built exactly what they wanna build up until now?
No, 'cause we couldn't sign off on the subdivision.
Okay.
If it was R eight, we could, they would meet the subdivision requirements. At this point, we could only subdivide it into two parcels.
Okay, I think my last question, I think my last question is, they wanna build four single-family houses?
Four.
Four?
Four.
And it's forty?
On this one and one on the other.
And that other one that you're talking about is part of this forty-three thousand square foot parcel?
No, that's up next.
Different, okay.
It's up next.
All right, so now I'm really confused, so please explain to me, if we have forty-three thousand square foot and R ten gives ten thou- four ten-thousand square foot lots, why is R ten not gonna work if it's gonna be single-family?
So R ten has, um, dimensional requirements that the road frontage couldn't, uh, meet to make the four, the four parcels and meet their, our subdivision requirements for creating new lots in that zone. Uh, R ten S was thrown up there because it was suggested you may feel comfortable knowing and you could only put single-family homes there rather than the apartments. That's why, that's why those are options up there for you to look at, um, not to muddle up at the screen, but that, that was the purpose of that.
Okay.
So R ten, you could get three lots, you couldn't get four?
Okay.
Question?
Sure.
R twenty, single-family detached, that's the residential uses. And R eight, single-family detached, part of the residential uses, and I know it expands to some others. Four homes in R eight, how many in R twenty?
Two.
Only two. Thank you.
Any other questions? So it's the difference between building two houses versus four houses, correct?
Correct.
That's assuming we're going to specifically tailor our analysis to what Mr. Clemmons is proposing. However, we know we have to think about all the possible uses and all the possible scenarios that any landowner could apply to these parcels.
I also want to remind the audience, this is a public hearing, so if anybody else would like to come forward, you're free to do so.
Do y'all have any more questions for me?
Yeah.
Ms. Clerk, just clarify, we did open the public hearing, correct?
You did.
Okay. Mr. Dillahun?
Mr. Dillahun?
I'm Jimmy Dillahun, father of Tom Dillahun.
Dillahun, Mr. Dillahun.
Could you, could you move that microphone in front of you, Mr. Dill?
I got a couple of comments I would like to make. Uh, as far as R eight, R eight, uh, says you have to have eight thousand square foot. Those lots really have more than eight, they have about nine-plus thousand square feet in those lots. And, uh, the reason we've been building out in the Pleasant Hill area, that's my home. I'm going out there in nineteen forty-seven. The area is, that's going to the dogs. You can go out there and count several homes, well, matter of fact, you can count twenty that have dilapidated, torn down. So, my purpose is to uplift the area and maybe someone else would want to move out there. But by being as it is, I don't think nobody would want to move in such a community. So, that's my purpose. And right up the road, I guess within a half a mile, there's a R six zoning. Uh, right up the road on the right-hand side, if you look, it's on R six. So, I want the board to consider that R six versus my R eight with the four houses. And again, I have about nine thousand square feet on those lots versus eight thousand. Meet much more than the requirements of those lots. So, you have some question for me, maybe I can answer them.
So, you said you have nine versus eight?
There definitely won't be no apartments built on those lots, to clarify that.
Alderman Casey?
It is actually ten thousand per lot. The R eight is eight thousand for one lot and more than four thousand for the other lot. Each lot has more than ten thousand each.
And the house gonna be at least fifty foot apart. They're not long house, they're more narrow than they are long, with about thirteen hundred square feet in them.
So, they don't have the information that you give?
Sure did.
But she said it was eight and you're telling us it's ten?
No, we were saying, the, uh, requirements for R eight is eight thousand square feet. But the lots are bigger than that. They have about nine, some of them have ten thousand square feet lots. So, they exceed the-
So, you mean the requirements?
Yeah, they exceed the limit as far as R eight. They're longer than R eight.
See the counsel?
Yes, sir.
So, what he's saying, he meets the requirements?
Sure did.
He, these lots, what he is proposing, do satisfy the minimum lot size for the R eight designation. That is not the end of your analysis, however. In addition to looking at, does he have enough acreage or enough square feet, you also have to look at permissible uses. And what he's saying is, I have a particular proposal. What the law tells you is, you have to consider all of the permitted uses or permissible uses in that zoning designation, which include single-family attached, single-family detached, as well as multifamily uses. So, we have to look at both sides of that coin in our analysis.
Mr. Dillahun, do you have all of those things that she just said?
Of course. And more.
I, I, I think, in, in the spirit of trying to be helpful, as the attorney likes to say, Mr. Dillahun's plan would meet this criteria. However, if this was rezoned tonight to R eight and the property was sold, then duplexes could be put there. Is that correct?
That's correct, duplexes could be put there, an apartment building could be put there.
I can guarantee the board, it will not be settled. There will not be no duplexes put on that property.
Ms. Rue, I have a, I have a question. I know we're going through our land use update and I see Mr. Duffy out there. He's always been, um, very vocal about conditional zoning. I'm just curious, is this a situation where a conditional zoning could be done to say, you can do R eight if you do your plan, but anything else you could not do?
Yes, absolutely, because you're essentially creating a unique zoning district for a piece of property when you have conditional zoning tools, which is still something we are moving forward to. The benefit of conditional zoning is we can debate the things that have been discussed tonight and actually make decisions on them, whereas without conditional zoning, with a typical rezoning, we're having to look at all of the uses. With a conditional rezoning, we would have already gone through the whole process and approved the site plan. It would have gone through DRC and the Planning and Zoning Board and come before you as a one-stop shop.
Thank you.
I just want to add some more connection, um, throughout the state of North Carolina.
Mr. Duffy, if you would come up to the microphone.
Throughout the state of North Carolina, eighty-eight, in cities our size, between twenty-five thousand population and a hundred thousand, eighty-eight percent of all rezonings are conditional. We do it on, at, at the actual meeting in the Board of Adjustment. It's done right there. Somebody puts a condition that doesn't like, and so on and so forth, the owner's agreeable to it, we can do it right there and it, and it's part of the record. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
You're way behind us. And little by the mom here for two, that case been going on for five or six years, four hearings and so on and so forth. It could have, that property should be put to use, as well as others in mind. You should do it. One point, uh, not the city attorney, but your city attorney recommended it.
Alderman Best?
Um, Mr. Dillahun? Yes? Um, I really want to accommodate you in having the desire to, um, build homes within the Pleasant Hill community. But, I also have a problem with me making a, a, a decision here to go against what the law requires. But, I, I don't have a problem with you putting four homes on that lot. I do know that a lot of citizens within the community does have a problem with because they were thinking you were gonna put more homes on the lot, like, six homes. I know.
Yeah.
But, now that we have an understanding here and the citizens, those that choose to, that are here and, and will be looking at this board meeting and getting its information, now have an understanding of how this rezoning is occurring. But, I don't have a problem with you putting four homes there. I just don't want this to become a problem later on with someone else in this area, and you see, there's a lot of property here that's zoned R twenty, that they can come here at some point in time and say, well, hey, I'm gonna rezone my property because I want to put some apartments on, on, on my property. That's the problem I'm looking at, I foresee coming down the road with other property owners wanting to rezone and put in apartment, uh, put in apartments. And if we don't, I particularly and others in the community do not want apartments within the community. But houses, single-family homes, I don't have a problem with it. So, I'm, I'm really caught here because I don't want to do something that we have our, um, developer, our, um, Ms. Jessica Rue here telling us and the city attorney giving us this information that if we go with R eight, then we're, you know, it's opening up the doors for other property owners to rezone to. A- and I just have a problem with that. Um, but, I, I, I don't have a problem with your four homes there.
Okay.
I, I, I mean, I, I, how, how can I be guaranteed that, you know, yes, Mr. Dillahun's gonna put four houses there and that's gonna be the gist of it? And then you're gonna put one house on the other lot? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Just one on the other lot?
Yeah.
Okay? Um, I, I, I don't have a problem with it, I don't know how the other board members feel about it. But I just, I, I just feel like that, Ms. City Attorney, I just feel like that if I recommend, yes, going with R eight, that I'm opening, that I'm not following the rules and guidelines of what we should be as a city by law. Am I correct?
I, I think there's some significant concerns about whether the R eight uses are consistent with adjoining and adjacent land uses.
Right.
Um, one of the things that you talked about was how there's lots of R twenty, the rule, character and agricultural nature of that particular corridor or neighborhood, and seeing uses that are permitted in R eight that are incompatible with the uses that we see. And that is the concern that I think the Planning and Zoning Board had, the concern that Ms. Rue was trying to express to you tonight. And I think the legal challenge that we would have if we had to defend such a decision.
But, but let me also say, when, within a half a mile, there are two big sections of R sixes, which are more restricted than R eight or R ten. So, to say it's incompatible with the entire area that is within a half a mile, it's just not true, okay? It is not incompatible if you take into account all of the entire area, which has a lot of homes. It has R six, it has R eight in the corner, it has R ten, it has R twenty. So, if somebody comes in on a case-by-case basis and says, oh, I have a R twenty and I now want to make it a R eight, I mean, I think you have to decide that based on the facts, just like you're gonna have to decide this one. But, what, I'm just saying, there's, there are others out there that are, are just as or more restricted.
And that's true, and I think it's also important to note when we're looking at those R six areas, I don't believe any of them are accessible from Highway fifty-three. I think they all enter from Washington Post Road, which has a significantly different character than the Pleasant Hill Loop Road, Highway fifty-five west section that we're talking about.
Alderman Astor?
However, though, I think, though, there's a road, proposed road that goes from Highway fifty-five that's gonna go into that R six area, is that right?
I'm not sure.
Okay. I mean, I understand, is it gonna be a road from Highway fifty-five that goes into one of those R six areas?
Alderman Astor?
I don't know anything about it, except, that's what I know.
Mr. Dillahun, Mr. Clemmons, I, I appreciate your argument tonight. I understand exactly what you're trying to do. I am all in favor of building new homes. But, take, I'm also want to take the advice of our counsel, our director, and as well as the Planning and Zoning Board. Uh, and I, I just, I, I don't think I've ever voted on something that our city attorney has told me not to vote for because it could put the city in a, um, a liable situation. So, I, I wish there was something else that could be done so he could get his four houses without changing the zoning fro, from R eight to R twenty. R twenty is what everybody's recommending on city staff, as well as the planning and zoning, as well as our city attorney. Uh, and she's representing the interests of the city of New Bern.
But you also have R, you have options also with ten S and these other ones. It reduces the number, so, ju, basically, here's what you're looking at. You're looking at a R twenty with two houses, or you're looking at maybe a R ten S with three houses. So, what is the difference? One house, I mean, we're gonna stand here and argue over one house?
Alderman Royal?
I mean, that's what I, that's the way I'm looking at it.
Thank you, Mayor. Going back to what Mr. Duffy presented, could you explain to me what he was meaning with conditional?
Yes, ma'am, so, the, the general statutes allow local governments to adopt conditional zoning. And with conditional zoning, they can look at each parcel, and if there are uses that are permitted in the zoning classification that would not be appropriate, then there's an opportunity to negotiate with an individual property owner and place conditions and essentially create a unique zoning district for that particular subject parcel. So, if we have conditional zoning in this type of context, if the single-family, um, uses are appropriate, but the multifamily uses are not, conditional zoning would allow us to say, we're going to zone the property, insert designation, but we're only going to allow you to do, um, single-family residences consistent with your proposal. And that would be entirely fine. Because the city of New Bern does not have conditional zoning, we cannot enter into that type of contract and it is illegal.
Ms. Rue, I have another question for you. Um, I'm trying to get your steps in for you tonight. Um, he wants four single-family houses, and he would need R eight to accomplish that based upon the setbacks. R ten allows duplexes. How many duplexes, if this were R ten, could be built on that parcel?
So, you would take the ten thousand required for the first unit and add five thousand for that second unit. So, you need fifteen thousand square feet in order to put a duplex.
So, he could do two duplexes, which would essentially be four houses, just two of them are attached?
Yes.
Mr. Dillahun, you can sell duplexes individually, just like you can an individual house. Would, would that be an option for you to build two duplexes?
I really had planned to, uh, put duplexes down. So, to sell them to an individual, first-time homebuyer, and that's what I'm going on the market for, first-time homebuyer. So, to do that, it'd be out of my league. I'm looking for a first-time homebuyer. So, that's moderate cost, less than two-hundred thousand dollars, affordable. So, a duplex would be out of the range. Duplex would probably be three-hundred, three-fifty, which would be out of the, out of the range of a first-time homebuyer. Unless you want to buy a duplex to move people down.
Well, yeah, what I'm saying is, if you built two duplexes and you needed four different units, you could sell those four units individually, correct, Ms. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
So, I don't know if it's changed, but typically, a duplex is cheaper than building one single-family house.
Sure, absolutely.
So, your actual four-unit cost to a first-time homebuyer would probably be cheaper if you went with duplexes versus single-family houses?
Absolutely, but everybody want the yard, the flowers there.
Sure, I understand. I'm just, I'm just trying to find a compromise to, that we might help.
If that the case, I mean, we can build duplexes, but I wouldn't like it, but I think what I need to do. But, looking in the neighborhood, I don't think my neighbors, and I do call my neighbors in Pleasant Hill, that's my home, I don't think they would like duplexes in that neighborhood.
Sure, excuse me.
There's another, not on the network, so, don't, don't get me wrong, sir. But, there's a difference, and in my neighborhood, we have both, so I, I understand it. It took me a long time to figure it out. But I live in an attached, single-family house that has separate owners, and they can be sold separately. I own mine, attached one to me, the owner happens to rent it out. So, it doesn't have, you don't have to sell it for three-hundred thousand dollars. You can go, so, that's the difference. And my neighborhood, for some reason, they changed in the middle of the building it, and they have, we have both duplexes. So, a single property that in order to sell it individually, I guess you'd have to subdivide it or something, so, but, you know, so that's the difference. Thank you.
One, one reason I brought that up as an option is because, Ms. Attorney can clarify, if, if your zoning request is denied tonight, what is that stipulation? You have to wait how long before you can come back?
I think it's a year.
So, what I'm trying to do, I, I want the board to be aware of that because I would rather the board not make a decision tonight versus making a decision that would hinder you from coming back for a year. So, I just want us to think about that before we would make a decision, that's all.
If that the case, okay, we could go with, along with the duplexes, there's no problem.
Okay.
We can do two duplexes, and that would be our, what would that be?
R ten.
R ten.
R ten.
That'd be R ten with two duplexes, so, sure. No problem.
Do you want us to continue this, so you'll have time to talk to council until next meeting?
Not really, we need to make a decision, I appreciate if you would.
So, you, you are agreeable to do two duplexes?
Sure.
Okay.
What is that zoning, again, it would be?
R ten.
R ten instead of R eight?
Mm-hmm.
Now, one question, I do have a single lot, which would not accommodate a duplex. So, asking the board, you're having to go with permission, and would they, okay? Maybe build a single-family house on?
That's the next agenda item.
Seven eighty-four. Yeah, no problem. Okay, no problem. If that's what the board decide on, we can live with that.
Okay, just a reminder, if anybody else in the audience would like to come up and speak, you're free to do so.
How you doing?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman? I'm Norris Dillahun, Jr., and this is my uncle Jimmy Dillahun. And I want to say that the houses that he is proposing to build, we've already built those houses for the city of Jacksonville for low-income homeowners, first-time homebuyers, through a program that they have. through a program that they have to, you know, get the first-time homebuyer in a, in the houses. And those houses that were built were sold very rapidly. And I understand what you guys are saying about the duplexes, but I personally would like to see the four houses built out there instead of the duplexes, because the four houses, you're, you're putting a family in a house, and you have a sense of, "This is mine", not in a house where another family lives right beside you. And when it comes to duplexes, I've seen where one side may get their roof repaired, and the other side don't. And, you know, it doesn't, it's not as appealing as owning your own house. I also know the people in the area that owns a vast majority of the land that's out there that you're talking about, that could potentially house, be big enough to house a development. And, you know, most of that land is owned by ex-farmers. And I don't think, you know, my uncle is a, is a builder. The people that own that land, they're not builders. So, I don't think that it would ever be a problem of somebody coming out there wanting to build duplexes or apartments on the property that's, that's there, that could hold something like that. So, I mean, if y'all could do the specialized condition where he could do the four houses, I think that would be beautiful for the neighborhood.
It was, Ms. Rue just, it was said to us by the city attorney and Ms. Rue that we, as a city, we don't have conditional zoning in order to do that.
Well, I thought you guys were saying that you could do a conditional zoning because?
We can't, unfortunately.
Let me, I got, I got one more question.
Sure.
For the attorney, you said I don't have enough space. Is that the problem why I can't put with R8?
No, sir, that's not the reason why I couldn't do with R8. So, the board would like me to answer the question?
Sure, please.
Some of the reasons.
The difference, if you look at the screen, Mr. Dillhart, there's an analysis of the different zoning districts. And one, there was a concern about the proximity to other R8s on Highway 55 West. So, that was one issue. And the other is, there are uses that are highlighted here on the screen under R8 that we do not see presently with your neighbors. So, that was another concern that has been raised.
So, R6 would be, or R6 is? Gonna have R6 within a mile, half a mile of the road? That's the question I'm asking. And I guess, who should I ask that to?
Well, see, what you were speaking of, Mr. Dillhart, the R6 is not on Highway 55 West.
Yes, ma'am.
No, well, no, this one is not on Highway 55 West, where you were talking about putting, you're wanting to put your four homes. It's basically off of, I think, a Stevenson Road?
It's not on Highway, I'm sorry.
Yes, right. But let me, let me ask you this question, Jessica. With the R6, um, that's off of Highway 43, okay? How, I mean, that, and I, I understand what Mr. Dillhart was asking about coming, I mean, that, it looks like apartment buildings, or I don't know if that's gonna be a, the apartment complex or what, but will that be coming off, the ingress and egress will be off of Highway 55 West?
No.
Okay. Do you know which area I'm speaking of?
Yes.
Okay.
And R6 was not given to you as an option this evening, so that's not something we consider. And I just want to remind everyone, this is not a citizen-initiated rezoning request. This is a request from the city staff to apply zoning to a property that does not have zoning that we have had annexed since January.
Anyone else from the public like to speak?
Yes, my name is Linda Hill, and I too would like to see four houses there. And I understand that you cannot do conditional zoning, but is all of 55 in the city limits? Because what will cause somebody else from the county to just go out there and get a petition from the county and build apartments? Or build something else?
I would say that it's, they could if they could get water and sewer. But when they ask to have water and sewer, that's a water-sewer agreement. They have to ask to be annexed into the city. So, that's why we get into this conundrum we're in. But if they had water and sewer, and they didn't need that from the city, they could build whatever they want, because the county doesn't have zoning.
Okay, but I thought, you know, like the county did that, uh, that, uh, that mound thing with the sewer, but they would still have to get the water, city water?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
That's correct. Like theoretically, if they could get a well, and they could get a septic system, they could build apartments. But I think it's.
So, but, okay, that pin, pin it right there.
Right.
Okay, so if they could do that, and you're talking about spot zoning, would that not consider being spot zoning? If that happened, I mean, 'cause that's a possibility.
Well, that wouldn't be spot zoning, because there would be no zoning.
Okay. But, but I'm just trying to say that, you know, you're talking about people coming in in the future and wanting to have it rezoned, whereas you're stopping somebody from building four houses that would actually allow somebody to have their own property. You, you know, because houses is hard to come by, and especially in the rural area. And, um, but anyhow, you've made up your mind, but we would love to see four houses out there on 55. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do, I do have one final comment.
Hold on, Mr. Jimmy, Alderman Royal.
Ms. Rue said that this was for initial zoning, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if we did the R20, could Mr. Dillhart follow up with a request for rezoning?
Yes.
To rezone to R8?
Yes, and in my opinion, and I believe our legal counsel's opinion, that would still be considered spot zoning the second time we heard.
I'm trying, Mr. Dillhart, very hard. I'm trying.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes. Okay, like I was saying, considering the next lot, we say we may need to table this. Table it to when, if we do table it?
So, the board has a couple of options. We could table this decision until we take up the next item, so we can see what that's all about, to see if there's any conjunction between the two. Or, we could table this to our next board meeting.
Well, let's table it to the next item, which is, uh, item 21, I believe.
Okay, so procedurally, let's do a couple of things. I want to make sure that nobody else from the public wants to speak, because what we would need to do is close the public hearing, and then the board would need to table this decision until after we hear the next item. So, is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak on this? Ms. Bliss, I saw you stand up earlier.
The only thing that I was gonna add is, the right thing to do seems so clear and apparent. And I know that everyone's struggling to get there. I think someone really needs to find a way to make that happen. I don't know what that is. I just wanted to voice support for a board leading and finding the right way to do things. Hopefully, that will happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to speak on this item? Okay, if not, I entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
Second.
No, I need a motion. I have a motion, my Alderman Astor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Alderman Kinsey, to close the public hearing. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. I would recommend, based off what we just said, that the board table item number 20 and take it up after item number 21.
Need to add a motion?
Yes, sir.
Seven, eight?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will move on to item number 21, and then come back to item number 20 once we decide on this one. Ms. Rue?
Okay, this one we can go through a little bit quicker. It's gonna be mostly the same information. This is a property several doors down. We have our same options and our same recommendation coming from the Planning and Zoning Board, although this one, I'll call to your attention, is a little smaller. This is just about a third of an acre. Here is our location. There is a parcel between the parcel we just wrapped up discussing, and this one. This is an illustration of the current conditions and the sign, our notifications, our zoning district analysis that we just walked through. We will note right now, R20 application was recommended by a Planning and Zoning Board, again, due to the vicinity reason. Although this lot that exists there is smaller than the minimum lot size, the Planning and Zoning Board felt having the, the lot that was smaller, because this already exists, so it's legal non-conforming if this was done, then, um, opening it up to the spot zoning that we've been discussing. R20, again, we're very familiar with this from the last hour. All of our zoning districts, we look at this as pieces smaller than the other one. They are not congruent or contiguous to each other. This is our aerial of this piece of property. Existing conditions, considerations, Planning and Zoning Board, again, recommended the R20. They base that on consistency in, in this discussion that we just had on what is in the vicinity of the area that the rural zoning district was most appropriate and in line with what exists out there.
Okay, the board have questions?
Only one family home can go, single-family home can be built on that particular lot because of size.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. At this time, I will open a public hearing on item number 21. Sorry, I lost my place.
I'm not gonna say much on this one, except it's one piece of property. The, the property between what we just talked about and what we're talking about now is owned by Mr. Dillhart, it's just not annexed, okay? And to give you the dimensions, it's at least, this one is at least 10,000 square feet. It's 92.5 feet on the frontage, which is, which would be bigger than the other section, if you divide it in four lots, which is 72.5 feet per lot. So, this one would be bigger. And the whole idea is to put a single-family house on it, zone it R8. It's 1,000 square feet for the house, and it'd be consistent with what the other ones look like. I also want to say this as a lawyer, okay? Because y'all know this, and she knows this. There, there is a concept in the law that when it comes to two restrictions on property, the law favors the least restriction on property in the United States. So, when a court looks at, is it gonna be more restrictive or less restrictive in terms of what the property owner wants? All the case law in the United States, including 250 years from North Carolina courts, always go with, you do what the least restrictive thing is as it relates to the property owner. The free use of property by the owner, regardless of all these rules and regulations, is the number-one rule that the courts look at in the United States. What is the property owner entitled to do? And is he allowed to do something that's least restrictive to him or more restrictive to him? So, at least on this one, I think it doesn't make any difference hardly. He's gonna put one house on it, and even if you did it ruled under R20, you would put one house on it. But under rule, I mean, under R8, he gets the same thing that he would get on the other four, other four lots, and it's more consistent. So, um, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public like to speak on this item?
May I make a motion to close the public hearing? Second?
On the, uh, on this lot, there's gonna be one house, about 25 foot wide, 52 foot long. They can be similar to the proposed house on the other lot. So, what are we saying? I can do one lot, then I can't do two? Do I need to divide the other lots up? Or what are we talking about? And that's all I'm gonna say about that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dillhart. So, I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Ms., uh, Ms. Attorney, I have a question. If we now have two separate parcels, what is the definition, from a legal standpoint, that spot zoning would no longer be a problem because there's other zoning in the area that is congruent or similar to that?
Very interesting question. So, when we look at illegal spot zoning, obviously, we look at the size and compatibility of the other uses. Having two parcels that are a parcel apart within a short distance from one another may lessen a illegal spot zoning argument as it relates to those two parcels. However, when we think about all the other uses that are applied and going out outside of those three lots that are owned by the Dillhart family, I think it still may be a challenge, considering the number of parcels in that area that are zoned R20 and A5.
And your boss is very famous for saying that anybody can sue anybody for anything at any time. Doesn't mean you're gonna win.
That's true.
But my question for you would be is, who would be someone who would sue the city that we illegally spot-zoned this? If, I mean, who would be, it was somebody that would have damages from that?
Somebody potentially that would have damages, and those persons who could have damages would be the adjoining property owners.
Okay.
It won't be me.
Does the board have any questions on item number 21? What is the pleasure of the board on item number 21?
May I make a motion to adopt an ordinance to establish initial zoning for 784 Highway 55 West as R20? Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? I'll just make the comment that, as I've said early on, there's a lot of unzoned parcels that surround this. Within a half a mile, there is R6, which is, the attorney pointed out, is more restrictive than R8. I personally, I'm not concerned about anyone suing us over a spot zoning when it's surrounded by unzoned property. But that's just me. That's my comments. Anyone else?
Now, a lot of that surrounding property is common property. So, that makes a big difference for the area. And these are a lot of large tracts of property out there that is R20. So, but, um, I don't have a problem with Mr., um, Dillhart building his house there on this particular lot.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, we do have a shortage of homes.
Exactly.
This is something that he's willing to put his time and efforts in to do this, to make it work and make it happen. And I'm willing to make a, a decision to be in favor of Mr. Dillhart moving forward to make this happen.
Okay, um, any further discussion? Okay, to be clear, this is, the motion and a second has been made to do an initial, initial... Okay, to be clear, this is, the motion in a second has been made to do an initial zoning for 784 Highway 55 West as R20. So let's have a roll call vote, starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Aster?
No.
Alderman Kinsey?
This is for the, for 21.
Item number 21, correct.
Item number 21. Okay, this is for the single house dwelling.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, yes, for that.
Mayor Odom?
No. Is that 4 to 2?
It is.
Okay, so that parcel will be zoned R20. Now, the board has to go back and consider item number 20. And not to leave the witness, but I'm not sure how this board could make any decision other than R20 at this point in time on item number 20. Public hearing's been closed, so now it's up for discussion for the board on your pleasure on item number 20.
So why did you say to us, make the statement, Mayor, that this board can make no recommendation in R20? Couldn't you just say that, when you just said you wasn't
Because this board just-
concerned about us getting sued for spot zoning?
Because this board just made a decision to zone a parcel that's one parcel down as R20. So how can the same board turn around and say that it should be anything other than what this board just agreed to?
That's one home on that lot.
It doesn't matter. It's the zoning. We're not talking about the number of homes. We're talking about the zoning. That's the reason it was-
And there's another house in between these lots. It's not side-by-side lots. There's another two-story structure in between these two lots.
Okay.
But...
Miss Attorney, am I off-base to think that it would be hard for this board or for you to defend a spot zoning argument if one was brought before this board when five minutes ago, we said a parcel two doors down was R20, and now we're going to say this one should be something else?
So in finding that the smaller parcel, the parcel that was in 21, was, R20 was compatible with adjacent land uses and reasonable, if that's the finding of this board, when we're looking at a parcel just up the street, the same analysis seems to be a logical option, unless there are some facts that you all can articulate that would distinguish this case from the other.
Well, I was looking at this particular parcel to be R10, which he and Mr. Dillhund agreed that he would put two duplex units on it. Am I, is that correct, sir?
I'm confused there. That was wrong.
Okay, now is that still?
We're talking about two duplexes. Right.
And is he still amenable to that?
Question?
Alderman?
R20, that can accommodate the duplexes? I do not believe so. I don't have the use chart, but no, ma'am.
The R10 will be the ones that will do the duplexes. That's the one that he agreed that he would like to have built, that he would do that. Instead, since he can get three, he can do it that way. He decided to go with R10 versus R20.
And the significant difference between 10 and 20 is the single-family attached and the duplexes. Those, that's the significant difference. So it's a bit more dense, but the uses are not radically different. And the density would not be radically different than an R20 designation.
Question, then, for item number 21. If we had to do R10 on number 20, then item number 21 should have been R10. Is that correct?
That was the point that I was-
So now how can I backtrack then?
You can't. The decision's been made. Correct, Ms. Attorney?
I think a member and the majority can vote to reconsider.
Okay. All right, so-
I'd like to make the motion to reconsider item number 21, because I thought both of them were going, the duplexes could be housed in R20.
So we have a motion to, I guess, help me out here. Do you want to change from 21, that we voted to make it R20 to make it R10?
Motion to reconsider.
Okay.
Motion to reconsider the action taken regarding line 21.
That's correct.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Alderman Best. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're going to reconsider item number 21 now. And the options are R20, R10, R10S, or R8.
For clarity again, the four duplexes is R10.
Correct.
That's correct.
Duplexes are permitted uses in R10, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Did you make a motion?
No, she hasn't.
No, no motion yet.
I'm making a motion.
It's open for whoever would like to make one.
I make a motion to adopt an ordinance to establish zoning for 784 Highway 55 West to R10.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Pril.
Alderman Pril?
No.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Aster?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. So item number 21 has now been deemed as R10. We'll go back to item number 20 for consideration. As a reminder, that is to establish the initial zoning for 750 Highway 55 West. And we're looking at doing it at R10 as well, correct? I would think so.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the ordinance to establish initial zoning for 750 Highway 55 West as R10.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Aster?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
No.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. So item number 20 and 21 is complete. Both have been rezoned to R10. Okay, moving right along to item number 22. Conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance to rezone 2409 Oaks Road, R6S to C3. Ms. Rude?
Thank you. Okay, this one will look familiar to some of you. This board, or previous boards of you sitting up here while. This is 2409 Oaks Road. The current zoning is R6S. The proposed zoning is C3. Again, this is a very small parcel in the middle of R6S. It's about a quarter of an acre. This is our vicinity map. This is a picture of the sign, proof of posting, proof of mailing. R6 is not explicitly explained, however, R6, R6 is a residential district. The S is deducted to mean single-family homes only. If we read R6, it's to encourage the use of land for residential purposes, certain compatible non-residential uses, to prohibit commercial and industrial use, to encourage the discontinuance of existing uses that would not be permitted as new uses in the district. Little zoning history here. It appears this was kind of a result of an annexation back in the 90s, and the R6S was kind of thrown on the whole area. A commercial, C3, as we have described earlier, is a more intensive commercial district. It generates a lot of traffic in and out. It has parking requirements, things like that. So if we look at these two uses, they are not really compatible at all. We have straight-up residential, single-family homes, and then a wide variety of commercial uses. This is our parcel. You can see, while there is some C3 across the street, this parcel is flanked by many other residences. It is in the developed category in our future land use plan, which really doesn't lend either way to the current or proposed zoning. This is an aerial of the subject parcel. And this is a picture showing the two residences flanking this sort of commercial use, which for some reason was zoned originally as R6S. The Planning and Zoning Board recommended denying this request. That was a vote of six to one. They felt it was inconsistent with city land use policies due to the incompatibility and the fact there was two residences flanking this piece of property. And as a reminder, this request has been denied twice before, back in June of 2019 and July of 2020. Happy to answer any questions.
Does the board have questions? I just have one. Are vape shops allowed in C3?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board? If not, I will open a public hearing regarding the rezoning of 2409 Oaks Road, R6S to C3. If anybody would like to come forward, please do so.
Good evening, sir. Hopefully, we can close this once and for all. As to why there are so many commercial, you know, buildings in the Oaks Road area, because we've addressed this before. It's because prior to annexation of Township 8 in approximately the 90s, it was part of Craven County, which has no zoning. So that's the answer to that. Decision on this, to approve this, would affect a very large part of Ward 5, because virtually all of Township 8, I believe, is in Ward 5. So you'd be saying that almost any property in, residential property in Ward 5 could be rezoned commercial with all kinds of uses. Once this became an next, annexed, it was zoned R residential, which means that the adjacent property owners have the same rights we all do to the protection of zoning. That's one of the reasons we pay taxes. That's why people ask to be annexed in many cases, or extraterrestrial jurisdictions also. Ironically, extraterrestrial jurisdictions, ETJs, have the protection of zoning. They don't pay taxes. So certainly, these residents are entitled to that same protection. So, and again, I do feel strongly that a lot of these problems could be solved by conditional zoning. A good example of this one would be, you could say, you know, groceries only, no alcohol, storage, workshops. You could have many different uses for it. That would be practical and so on and so forth. And why he was, if he was misled when he bought it, I don't know. But in the time I was there, since 2015, it never operated as a store. When I first came here, I didn't have the scooter. Now I have a scooter, I don't care. I just had a bicycle. And so I was riding all over town, back and forth, and stopping at his other two locations that he owns at the end of, each end of Oaks Road, for beverages to keep me going and the sun. And it was never opened as a store, you know, in that timeframe. So thank you for your attention, you know, so. And I don't think it would take a whole long time to, you know, adopt conditional zoning. It's in the, it's in, the language is already in the section on special use permits. So the language is there. And as I said, I've been there when we did it on the fly, you know. So we do it right there at the meeting. They amend the application, and it's done. And if the owner ever wants to take it off or change, they can come back and ask where to be changed. But again, you can't condition, assume that he's going to use it as a store, as he said in the past, because the zoning, rezoning goes with the land. It is also spot rezoning, which, and the problem, we could be suing him for spot rezoning. If somebody, if you did it and somebody did work on it, or if a sale was conditional upon rezoning, then he would have requests against the city. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Make a motion to close?
Oh, hold on.
So, when we bought the property back in 2019, we were, five was commercial, because, I mean, as, looking at the history of the property, it was built in 1950 as commercial for retail. And that can be seen by like the floor plan and stuff like that. So, I mean, for us to really try to convert it to residential, it will probably cost us five times what we paid for it. So, I mean, that's, that's why I've been vacant for, since we bought it in 2019, because it's, yes, make no sense financially or logically.
Did I understand you to say you bought it because it was commercial?
No, we thought it was.
Oh, okay, all right.
Because, I mean, for like, previous owners, we spoke to them, I mean, it was, we looked at the property history. I mean, it was built for commercial, and it's been operated for commercial since it was built, I think, maybe into the 90s, I believe so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Make a motion to close the public hearing. Second?
A motion in a second to close the public hearing. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. What's the pleasure of the board on item number 22?
Considering, I don't, consider rezoning this to C3?
That's your motion?
Yes. Well, this to not be rezoned.
Oh, not, so you want to deny the request?
I'm denying the request.
So Mayor, there, I believe, is an inconsistency statement that's included in your package. So I think Alderman Best's motion is to adopt the inconsistency statement regarding the property located at 2409 Oaks Road, which effectively denies the rezoning request.
I didn't, I didn't have that with the printout here. Okay, but I'll restate it. I'm requesting that the, to, that the property at 2409, excuse me, Elks Road, be, is inconsistent with required rezoning to C3. Is that correct?
I think her motion is to find that the property, the application is inconsistent with adjacent land uses and not reasonable.
Yes.
You good with that, Alderman?
I'm good with that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
If you don't, if you don't want it to be rezoned, your answer would be yes.
Thank you. Yes. Alderman Aster?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item is not rezoned. Next item up is item number 23. Conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance to amend rate schedule 60 and add schedule rider number two for consumption of electricity, Mr. Bouchard.
Good evening, Mayor Odom. I'm the board of Alderman. Tonight, I'm proposing to amend rate schedule 60, effectively making that rate schedule obsolete and unavailable to existing customers that are not presently served by the rate. Schedule 60 is a credit we give to customers for energy that they produce and put back on our distribution system. As part of our rate modernization efforts, it's been identified that the structure of the energy credit on schedule 60 falls short of consumer requirements as well as regulatory requirements. So as a result, your affirmative action would make schedule 60 obsolete, would not be available to new customers. However, those customers that are presently using that rate, producing solar energy, putting it back onto our distribution system, they can stay on that rate indefinitely. We just would not offer it to any new customers. Concurrently, in effort to modernize our solar offering, I'm proposing that we adopt rider number two. And this is a new residential solar offering that better serves the consumers' requirements as well as regulatory requirements. There's a limitation to the first 100 customers. And in support of this, staff would be monitoring the performance of the rate and recommend any adjustments that may need to take place as we learn more about the performance of the rate and the performance of those solar customers that may be forthcoming. the rate and the performance of those solar customers that may be forthcoming. With that, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Does the board have questions? Charlie, I have, I have one for you. I'm assuming that our attorney has reviewed this?
Yes, sir.
We're okay with limiting the first hundred customers?
Yes, sir.
And we're in compliance with our requirements with electricities?
Electricities doesn't have any compliance requirements for us.
So electricities tells us that we can't generate a certain amount of power, and this is in compliance with that?
Yes, sir, I misunderstood. We're in compliance with our power supply contract agreement.
Thank you. Any other questions on the board? Hearing none, at this time I will open a public hearing to consider the amending rate schedule sixty and adding schedule rider number two for consumption of electricity. If anybody would like to come forward, please do so at this time.
May I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Thank you. Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. What is the pleasure of the board on item number 23?
I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting an ordinance to amend the rate schedule sixty and add schedule rider number two for consumption of electricity.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Charlie. Next up is item number 24. Consider adopting a resolution approving a water and sewer use agreement with DGT Ventures LLC for 4301 U.S. Highway 70 East, Mr. Hughes, Jordan Hughes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Before tonight is consideration of adopting a water and sewer use agreement for the property owners of 4301 U.S. Highway 70, which is DGT Ventures, the Mountfield LLC. The property owners are proposing to develop a auto dealership on this property. We have prepared our standard water and sewer use agreement, which has been reviewed by the city attorney's office as well as executed by the property owners. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the agreement or the water and sewer connections.
Does the board have questions?
If there's no questions from the board, I make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a water and sewer use agreement with DGT Ventures LLC for 4301 U.S. Highway 70 East.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Jordan.
Thank you.
Item number 25. Consider adopting a resolution approving a lease agreement with the Area Day Reporting Program for Youth for Property located at 500 Fort Totten Drive, Mr. Chops.
Good evening, Board. This is just another annual renewal for Area Reporting Day. This has been a continued lease for several years. They have been in good standing during that time, and this will be a current renewal until the end of June, when the lease will need to renew.
Does the board have questions?
May I make, if there's no questions, I make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a lease agreement with the Area Day Reporting Program for Youth for Property located at 500 Fort Totten Drive.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call vote starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next is item number 26. Consider adopting a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for Section 5303 FTA Planning Funds, Mr. Treble.
Good evening. The City of New Bern, on behalf of the New Bern Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, is identified as the direct recipient of Section 5303 Federal Transit Administration Urban Planning Funds. Every year, NC DOT requires that the MPO lead planning agency, which is the City of New Bern, elected officials to approve a resolution authorizing their representative to sign the grant agreement with NC DOT to receive such funds. For fiscal year 2026, the total of 5303 allocation is $67,047, I'm sorry, $67,047, with a federal and state share of $60,341, and a local share of $6,706, of which $4,371.86 is New Bern's per rata share for the local match. And at this time, I ask for some consideration in approving the resolution and execution of the contract.
Board have questions?
Hearing no comments from the board, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for Section 5303 FTA Planning Funds.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call vote starting with Alderman Pril.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, Board, we can start making up some time here if you'd like. Item number 27 and 28 can be considered together. So I'll read them both. Item number 27 is consider adopting a resolution approving the Redevelopment Commission's sale of 911 Eubank Street. And item number 28 is consider adopting a resolution approving the Redevelopment Commission's sale of 821 West Street, Mr. Huff.
Good evening, Board. Tonight I bring before you the Redevelopment Commission's recommendation for the sale of 911 Eubank Street. It's a property in the Duffield neighborhood. This action represents another tangible step in our commitment to put vacant and underutilized parcels back into productive use for families in New Bern. The site at 911 Eubank Street is made up of a parcel on 911, on Eubank Street combined with a relocated home from Gasson Street for the redevelopment purposes. The Redevo, the commission oversaw the relocation and rehabilitation of a single-family home onto the site through federal CDBG resources. This has been a long-term effort to stabilize and reinvest in this section of the community. The parcel is .13 acres plot and was conveyed to the RDC by the city in November of 2020. In keeping with our adopted disposition policy, we conducted a sealed bid process on August 13, 2025. The commission formally accepted the highest responsible bid in the amount of $60,000 from Ms. Catherine Loving. The property will carry with it the necessary CDBG lien notes and covenants to ensure continuous qualified occupancy. On behalf of the commission, I respectfully request the board's approval on this sale so that we may proceed with closing and formally return 911 Eubank Street to community use. In addition, I'm also asking for your consideration at 821 West Street, 821 West Street identified as parcel 8-007-225 in Craven County GIS system. This lot is approximately .11 acres and is currently a vacant residential site under the RDC's ownership. Its location along the West Street corridor makes it an important piece of our broader redevelopment strategy. Following statutory requirements, the property was offered through upset bid process. That process was completed, and on August 13, 2025, the Redevelopment Commission voted to accept the bid of $6,375 from Mr. Sergio Aranis. Mr. Aranis has expressed, had expressed his intent to construct a primary residence for this site for his family. The conveyance will include covenants requiring timely construction and owner occupancy. Accordingly, the Redevelopment Commission respectfully requests your approval for this sale as well. I'll take any questions on either sale.
Board have questions?
Make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the Redevelopment Commission's sale of 911 Eubank Street as well as 821 West Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
Mayor, if I could, I'm sorry, I didn't get it quick enough with my comment or question for you. I mean, I intend to vote in favor of these two items, but I just feel that I would be remiss not asking you the question. Is the Redevelopment Commission considering any other possible purchases, relocation of structures in the future?
I can pretty confidently say no, sir.
Okay. And without going into a lot of detail, I mean, I think the Eubanks property was a tough lessons learned, and I would certainly hope that in the future, if, if any other opportunity came up, that a very thorough evaluation would need to be done before moving in that direction in the future. So, but anyway, so just wanted to kind of get that out.
Of course.
Thank you.
Alderman Pril, I think that's a great assessment, and I would say, thinking back on that decision, that was a politically motivated decision to move that house when the, probably the best financial decision would have been to tear it down. But that was in the midst of the Stanley White relocation discussion, I'll call it. And yes, but lesson learned. And I think this is also another good lesson learned, that CDBG funds are so restrictive that you better be dang sure what you're going to do with it before you spend them. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, Board, we can also consider 29, 30, and 31 together, so I'll read them all at this time. Considering adopting a resolution approving the sale of 323 Liberty Street, 1002 Sampson Street, and 605 Second Avenue, Mr. Hughes.
On the first item, in August of 2024, an initial bid of $1,380 was received for the purchase of this property. The bid was advertised and multiple upset bids were received. The final bid of $6,161 was submitted by Patricia Smith. The property is a vacant .039 acre lot suitable for commercial development. The property was acquired by the city and Craven County in April of 2015 through a tax foreclosure. If the property is sold for the final bid, the city will receive $2,608.79, and the county will receive $3,552.21. On the second item, BCJ Development LLC submitted a bid in the amount of $2,700 for the purchase of this partial. The bid was advertised with no upset bids received. The property is a vacant .062 acre residential tract that was acquired by the city and county in November of 2005 through a tax foreclosure. If the property is sold for the final bid, the city will receive $1,669.99, and the county will receive $1,031.01 from the proceeds. On the third property, Victoria Clark submitted a bid in the amount of $2,700 for the purchase of this property. In October of 2000, in October of 2024, the bid was advertised and several upset bids were received. The final bid of $5,037.50 was submitted by Ms. Clark. The property is a vacant .078 acre residential tract that was acquired jointly by the city and county in September of 2013 through tax foreclosure. If the property is sold for the final bid, the city will receive $2,686.43, and the county will receive $2,351.16.
Does the board have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution approving the sale of 323 Liberty Street, 1002 Sampson Street, and 605 Second Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next, we will be considering, if you would like, items 32 and 33. Item number 32 is consider adopting a resolution approving a grant from the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program for Law Enforcement Liaison. And item number 33 is consider adopting a resolution approving a grant from the North Carolina Highway Safety Program, Highway Safety Program for Overtime. Chief Gallagher.
Thank you. This probably represents the fourth time I've been before this body requesting very similar grants from the North Carolina Highway Safety Program. We utilize the monies to help educate and reduce reckless driving, speeding, and crashes and fatalities. The $20,000 will be used for overtime specific to New Bern, and the $30,000 will be used in our region. New Bern and the New Bern Police Department leadership represents our particular region, and although we are not specific to the $30,000, we benefit greatly from it. And I encourage you, as you've done the past four years, approve these two grants.
Board have questions for the chief?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution approving a grant from the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program for Law Enforcement Liaison, and a grant from the New Jer, North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program for Overtime.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is item number 34. Consider adopting a resolution approving an investment policy, Ms. Osh.
This investment policy establishes guidelines for managing city funds, ensuring safety of principle, sufficient liquidity to meet financial obligations, and a reasonable return on investments. A formal policy is essential to safeguard taxpayer dollars, comply with state law, and promote transparency, accountability, and consistency in financial policy practices. Specifically, the policy addresses ethical standards, statutory mandates, procedures and internal controls, authorized investments in transactions, diversification and maturity parameters, and required reporting and auditing, including quarterly reports and annual financial statements. This policy complies with the North Carolina General Statutes 159-30 and meets the standards of the Government Investment Officers Association Policy Certification. With current total cash investments at $71 million, the importance of having this policy in place is clear. It is requested that the board adopt the resolution formally approving investment policy before you.
Does the board have questions? I do on item number 10 in the investment policy. It talks about limit on receipts, gifts, gratuities. And it says that employees responsible for managing the city's investment portfolio, as well as any member of the Investment Program Oversight Committee, may accept honoraria, gifts, or gratuities from any advisor, broker, dealer, banker, or other person with whom the director of finance does business, provided that the total value does not exceed the limit set by the city policy in any fiscal year. I'm assuming that's probably just a boilerplate statement, but in this particular situation, that really raises some red flags. I don't know what, off the top of my head, what the city policy is, but when we're talking about investment of city dollars in an investment portfolio, I don't know why we just wouldn't say that you cannot accept anything.
So these are things like a polo hat, grapples, that kind of stuff. And I think our limit is about $25, if I remember correctly, in our policy, under, anything under $25, it's pens, paper, pads of paper.
Okay. As long as everybody's good with it, it just, it caught my eye.
And it references the city policy so that we're not having to always update this if we had to update the city policy.
So just for the record, there has been an unwritten policy for many years with a maximum amount of $15.
Unwritten policy?
Unwritten policy. That's been the expectation.
That's been the expectation, yes. Okay. Board have any more questions?
I can make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving an investment policy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next, we can look at items 35 and 36 together. Item number 35 is consider adopting a resolution accepting ownership and maintenance of certain streets in phases one, two, and three of Lakeview Development. And item number 36 is consider adopting an ordinance to amend section 7099, stop intersections to add certain streets in Lakeview Development. Mr. Charles.
Yes, the consideration is for the street acceptance of phase one, two, and three of the Lakeview community, which is off of Thurman Road and Old Airport Road. And more three, it consists of Abbey Lee Avenue, Betty Grisham Lane, Clydesdale Court, Loretta Lane, Underwriter Lane, and Weathersby Drive. In your package, there are certifications of completion by the owner and an engineer certification of completion by the designer. Public Works has inspected this and worked with the developer and the engineer over the past eight months to address outstanding issues. We find that the construction of roads were built to standards, and that what we are accepting is in the best interest of the city and residents.
Does the board have questions?
George, I know you received it because I sent a bunch of them to you. We've got some residents out there that just feel that the roads were not built to standards. They were complaining about crumbling sidewalks and stuff. You've inspected and found no...
There are some aesthetic issues, but there's no functional issue with what is installed. There was one section of concrete, which I've reached out to one of the residents. I have not been able to communicate with that person yet, of a broken piece of edge banding. A lot of the driveways in that, in the entire development, have a six-inch tall band, decorative band around the driveway, and that's what this appeared to be. And if that is the case, that is not a part of the street right of way, and would not be a responsibility of the city to maneuver.
So, some of those photos were actually private, on private property?
I believe so, yes. Some of them may have been, yes.
Okay. And you're happy with everything?
Yes, you know, approximately 12 to 18 months ago, we did have some issues with the storm drainage, some vegetation. We had some sloughing of the embankments. The developer had a contractor go back in and rework these sections, and we are satisfied with the form and function of the intended design in storm one.
George, we did have some discussions about the aesthetic of a few sections of sidewalk. What are your plans for that?
You know, we'll keep an eye on some of them. Some of them had some aggregate that had popped out of the top, but there was nothing that would have prevented the use of the sidewalk. There was some skim coating. It looked like possibly a different concrete batch was used on one section, so the textured finish is a little bit different. But once we have taken responsibility, that only warranties any of the work for 12 months. Beyond that point, then if there is a deficiency or a failure in that, then we will address it. Public Works will address it directly.
George, I mean, George, last week, was it last week we was going through the neighborhood looking at scoring of the roads that needs repair? Have you completed all that yet? Get back with me to let me know when will we start our paving cycle, and how many roads that's totally, that needs repair? And then we just put some sidewalks down on Colony Drive. Have you looked at any other areas that may be shortcoming, that we need to look at some more, adding some more sidewalks?
Well, with the paving, obviously, we are always looking forward into the paving funding that we have available. But really, before we start announcing paving on a large scale, we're going to wait on the bond referendum items, because that will substantially change our course in how we plan our paving.
So, that would probably bring us more to speed, to catch up with a paving cycle that we can actually fall into?
Well, certainly, $10 million should address a lot of roads. That's what I think, yes.
So, that bond referendum is going to be something very important that we can count on, looking at giving everyone a chance to participate.
As far, as far as the dollars will go on the linear footage, that one would address every road.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor? Hello, I got, I got a question. I remember looking at some of those sidewalks, and it looked like it was a different pore. Aggregate looks different. My question for you would be is, if the city was paving the sidewalk, and we were doing it ourselves, or we had subbed it out to a contractor, and the sidewalk turned out looking the way it does now, what would we have done then?
If it was recent to the pore, yes, likely the contractor would have pulled it themselves. In this case, there's a lot of infrastructure. This development's been going on for four to five years. At what point are we talking about a maintenance item versus a failure item? So, a maintenance item, general statute doesn't allow us to hold bond money on items that were installed that were too standard, and then for a maintenance, if it's just a typical maintenance. We have some areas that sidewalk's been installed, landscapers may have edged it, chips on the concrete, is that on the developer? No, does it jeopardize the function of the sidewalk? Not necessarily.
Okay, and then those, those backyards that several of us walked because of drainage, all that's been fixed?
I was not a part of the repair, but from my understanding and observation, it was addressed between the house builder, developer, and the residents on that, on those lots.
You concur with that?
I know, I know at least two were taken care of. They were neighbors.
Correct.
And we just received, I think, an email from one of them with some other concerns, but I know his was taken care of.
I haven't received any on backyard drainage.
No, no, it wasn't on that. I think they sent a letter on some of the other stuffs that they did. No, actually, it was questions to you.
Yeah.
But the, but his, his problem was resolved. The contractor resolved his problem.
Okay.
Well, we really don't have anything to do with backyard drainage anyway, do we?
Not necessarily, no. In general, in general developments, the backyard drainage is usually a responsibility either the HOA or the property owner.
But if it carries water off of our streets that we're getting ready to accept, we do, correct?
And if it, if it carries water off our streets, and it's not a part of their treatment system that's designed in their state plan, we would have some responsibility, yes.
I don't think that was the case on this particular one.
No, I believe this was just drainage with the houses, a little bit of slope, slope change.
Because he was trying to actually get it to the street.
Correct, and that was what was achieved, I believe.
It's a pleasure of the board on item number 35 and 36.
Mayor, make a motion to approve a resolution accepting ownership and maintenance of certain streets in phase one, two, and three of the Lakeview Development.
And 36? And 36. Alderman Prill, do you want to combine that with item number 36?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. And part two, I guess, is to amend section 70-99, stop intersections to add certain streets in the Lakeview Development.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Prill.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Reluctantly, yes. Thank you, George. Next up is item number 37. Consider adopting an ordinance to amend the multi-year grants fund. Ms. Ostrom.
The multi-year grants fund is amended to account the police department grant awards for $610 from the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council for National Night Out, $30,000 from the Governor's Highway Safety Program for Law Enforcement Liaison, $20,000 for the GHSP for overtime funds, and $4,399 from the New Bern Police Department Volunteer Group through funding awarded by the Great Foundation Grant to assist with the purchase of a trailer. No manches or report for any of these grants.
Board have any questions?
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance to amend the multi-year grant fund.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Do the board have any appointments tonight? Hearing none, attorney's report?
Nothing tonight, sir.
City manager's report?
A few things to update you all, and a reminder that the 9/11 ceremony will be this Thursday at 8:30 a.m. at the Fireman's Museum. Ceremony will be presented by New Bern Fire Rescue and the Police Department. Also, a reminder that early voting will begin on September 18th at the Stanley White Recreation Center. We've been working with the Board of Elections to help through that process. Excuse me. Also, want to remind you that our next bond meeting is coming up tomorrow night, 4 p.m. to 7 p.m. at the Stanley White Recreation Center. We have two other sessions. One will be Thursday, September 25th, at the West New Bern Recreation Center for 4 to 7. And the final one will be on Tuesday, September 30th, at the New Bern Mall for 4 to 7. So, I want to remind everyone, if you have questions about the bond referendum, please call us at City Hall. Please go online at newbernc dot gov. We have a robust page that talks about the bond referendum. It goes back over the last year on the process we went through to determine which projects we were going to let the citizens decide on. I have received some, some comments that there are a couple of sites out there that are putting information out there. I highly recommend if anyone has questions about the city of New Bern bond referendum, to go to the city website, newbernc dot gov, for factual information. That's all I have tonight, sir.
What about the change scope work?
The grant's coordinated to not get back before 5 o'clock today, so we'll have to wait until the next meeting.
Okay.
Is that all, sir?
That's all.
Okay, new business, Alderman Prill.
Two items, Mayor. Chief Locklear, could you step to the podium? The first item I have, and if I, Foster, if I misstate this, please correct me. In this year's budget, funding was included in the fire department budget for the purchase of a drone, in the amount of $3,000. I suspect, and I don't know, that the original request was higher than the $3,000. Chief, do you, is that correct?
That's correct.
It was higher than that, but it got reduced down as part of the budget process to, you know, bring a budget to the board that the city manager felt was, would be acceptable. So, the, the funding of $3,000 does not provide you with enough funding to purchase the drone with the capabilities that the department is looking for. Is that an accurate statement?
That's correct.
So, a request, or, well, request was, was made to me if, if I would be supportive of supplementing the $3,000 budget allocation with some Ward 1 ARPA funds to bring the, the funding level up to a point that the fire department could proceed with purchasing a drone that is equipped with thermal imaging or a thermal sensor capability?
Thermal imaging capability, that's correct.
Okay. And the additional amount of funding to bring it up to the level to be able to purchase this drone is an additional $5,845.97. I'm, I'm willing to make a motion to ask the board to consider appropriating the $5,845.97 of the ARPA funds from what is remaining in the Ward 1 allocation. So, I'll make that into a form of a motion.
And, and before you finish, Alderman Prill, just so you'll know, you have $40,601 remaining in allocation.
Okay.
Does the board have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
It's not a surprise.
I was second to his by the week.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
He's got $35,000 left. You need anything else?
I'll come up with something. Thank you very much. Thank you, chief.
The, the second item I have, just provide a little background, just to kind of set the stage for this motion. Going back to 2010 timeframe, the, the sitting board at that time engaged in a discussion about term limits, and it's, it's interesting to, to kind of go back and, and look at the, the minutes of the meeting, because there was a resolution on an agenda to establish term limits, but there was also a second provision of that resolution, and that was to change the city charter to allow the, the mayor to be able to vote on all matters that are brought before the board, as opposed to what the existing language of the charter was, that the mayor would only vote to break a tie. But there was no, it didn't appear that there was any discussion at all about that part of the, the resolution that was being considered. The, the primary focus was on term limits. And it's a little odd to me that changing of a municipal charter didn't generate any discussion. Ultimately, the resolution was approved. The city was subsequently notified by the state that establishing term limits was unconstitutional in North Carolina. And so, the, that part of the resolution could not be enacted, and at a later date, the board revised the resolution to eliminate the provision for term limits, but it did not take any, any additional action on the changing of the city charter. I, again, this is my own personal feeling. I think, moving forward, the city would be better served if we were to consider going back to the original charter language, where the, the mayor would be a tiebreaker in those instances where the board votes on a matter and ends up in a tie vote, then the mayor would be, would break that tie. I think, again, I just feel that, moving forward, that the city would be better served to revert back to the original charter language. And in that vein, I'd like to make a motion that the board approve a resolution requesting the North Carolina General Assembly to introduce and secure passage of local legislation to amend Article 2, Section 2.2 of the city charter, to revert back to the original charter language that prohibits the mayor from voting, except in the case... except in the case, um, to break a tie, a tie vote of the Alderman. Um, so make that in, in the form of a motion.
I second that. I was a part of that, and at first, when I first came on. And when they changed the charter, I voted against that myself. And so that's something that I discuss as we, as I have served.
Mayor, I just want to make sure I'm clear on the motion. Is the motion to adopt a resolution? Or is the motion to direct staff to bring back a resolution for your consideration?
We don't have a resolution to adopt, sir.
So it's to bring back?
Well, and, and I leave it up to legal counsel. I don't know whether the, the motion that I made is, is, is proper in that form, or whether it's something like this would require a written resolution to be prepared and brought back to the board for consideration.
Yes, our city charter requires that any resolutions be presented to the board in writing.
Okay, so I will revise my motion to reflect that, um, I guess staff be authorized to prepare a motion.
To prepare a resolution for the board's consideration at the next meeting?
Yes, I'm sorry, to prepare a resolution for the next meeting, uh, for the board to consider changing, uh, the city charter to go back to, um, the previous charter language, uh, whereas where the mayor only votes uh, in, in the instance of breaking a tie vote of the board of Alderman.
So the rev, you're instruct, you're asking for a mo, you're making a motion for staff to bring back a resolution to ask the General Assembly to change the charter?
Yes.
Okay. I understand. Does everyone else understand the motion?
Do you concur with that, with your second?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion? Um, I, I'll, I'll say a few things. Um, I'm looking at my calendar and the next meeting will be after? Let's see, the next meeting is going to be September the twenty-third, in the middle of early voting. Um, the way this process works, attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, the board would pa, if the board were to pass a resolution, it would go to the General Assembly for them to be considered during their long session, which begins January? I think, after the first year?
That's right, but I can't, uh, I can't swear to that.
Um, and what typically, Alderman Pril, in North Carolina, what you would see from your state legislators is they would look at local requests like this, and they would ask themselves questions like, is it unanimous? Uh, because typically, state legislators don't want to get involved in controversial issues. Um, of course, I can't speak for either one of ours, um, but I would love to hear their assessment on whether they would take something before the General Assembly that was approved by a board with three meetings left before a new board was sat. So I'll tell you what I'll do, if you're willing to amend your motion. If you have that resolution come back on the second agenda on December the ninth, I would vote in favor of that.
Ms., um, city attorney, how long does it usually take, I mean, estimate of, for a request like that? For the city charter to be changed?
Much.
Oh, my goodness. That, that's entirely up into, it's, it's up to the General Assembly to do their magic. And I, I don't, I can't predict that, unfortunately.
Okay.
I, I just think it's something the new board should discuss, period. You know, every one of us, well, everybody up here is subject not to be here, at least a few, except for me. And in my opinion, I'd rather for the way, for this be discussed by the new board. Because the action's going to take place while the new board is seated.
That was my recommendation.
And I agree with him on that, because that is the way to take that.
Alderman Pril, are you willing to amend your motion for that?
Uh, well, amended in what way?
That it would be put on the second agenda on December the ninth. For the new, that would be for the new board to take up on December ninth.
Um, it, it doesn't preclude, if we, if the vote were taken tonight, it doesn't preclude a new board from taking further action if they were so inclined. I mean, if they, if they were not in agreement with, um, any vote taken by this board, um, they could certainly take formal action to basically request, you know, the General Assembly to, um, just withdraw, um, you know, the re, the original request. So it, it doesn't preclude them from acting.
Yeah, well, but, but you're, you're basically, you're taking a vote and sending something to our legislators when they're not in session. So they can't even take it up until they come back in session. And when they come back in session, at least two of you won't be sitting here.
Well, I did, again, I mean, if you go back and look at the previous action taken in, in two thousand and ten, um, same basic timeframe that we're talking about right now. And that didn't seem to be of any concern back then, so I'm not sure why it would be of concern today.
No, it wasn't an election year.
But in an election year, though, that's my concern. I think it's something that the new board should discuss. You know, it's going to be, at least, like you said, at least two of you that won't be sitting here next time. And I think it's, it's something that the new board needs to discuss.
So if you're going to stick with your motion?
Uh, at, at this point, yeah. I think I'd just like to present the motion and see, so I'll see what happens.
To bring this up at our next meeting? Okay, Alderman Kinsey has removed his second. Would anybody else like to second his motion to bring this back at the next meeting?
Explain that again, Mayor, next meeting?
Sure, so Alderman Pril made a motion to have a resolution drafted that would essentially change our city charter and bring that back at our next board meeting, which is in two weeks. Um, I made the comment that that is in the middle of early voting. Um, the state legislature would have to take this bill up in Raleigh and determine whether or not they want to move forward with it or not. And they're not even in session. They're not in Raleigh working. So they won't be in, working in Raleigh until after the new year. By that time, there will be a, a new board. And it's highly likely the new board may have other things within the city charter that they may want to address. So I just think it would be rather odd to do this now and not wait for the new board. But.
Ms. Attorney, what is your recommendation?
Well, I, I think this is a political decision for you all to make. But one thing to bear in mind in this discussion, there are pros and cons to having the resolution placed on the next agenda in September. Um, certainly, the mayor brings some great points about the fact that if that resolution is passed, it goes to Raleigh and it sits until next year. And that may or may not be advantageous to you all, um, the lack of consideration for that time. If you all were inclined to have the new board consider it later in the year, um, contemplating a change becoming effective shortly thereafter, then that may or may not shape whether the resolution passes. And certainly, if a resolution is not unanimous going to our General Assembly. Historically, those changes have not been effective. So at this juncture, um, if you're thinking about the legal possibilities, both Alderman Pril's rec, motion is a legal pathway. The comment that the mayor made is also a legal pathway. But one presents practical challenges that the other does not. There are certain practical challenges when we think about the legislature being at a session for the remainder of the year that this board cannot overcome. However, the alternative position does not, uh, include those same practical challenges, if that makes sense.
So we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Let me ask a, a question of, of city council. Could a resolution be acted on tonight? That would include a provision for the issue to be, um, revisited in the, by the, you know, at the first meeting in December with whoever's going to be sitting up here for further consideration? And then however they choose to move forward, they're free to do so.
Well, we don't have a resolution before us tonight, so.
No, but what I'm saying is that have staff bring back a resolution for, you know, for consideration in two weeks that would include a provision requesting the new board, however the verbiage needs to be put in there, to, um, consider this action. And, and this is assuming that in two weeks, the resolution gets approved. It might not get approved, um, so the whole issue is moot at that point. But if it were to be approved in two weeks, it would, it would include a provision asking the new board to review that decision at the first meeting in December.
You, you absolutely could do that to ask the board. You can't bind the new board, but you could ask them. But it begs the question then, if we're taking action now and asking a new board to revisit it, what are we hoping to accomplish in having the resolution in two weeks? And it, and it may be that we are accomplishing something, but having those two provisos in there together, mud is the water's good.
What's that?
I said, having the two provisos together, that we're going to take this action, but we want it to be reviewed.
I think, I think just leave it up to the new board, let them, they're, they're going to know. Some of the new board might be sitting in this room tonight.
So, so just, just for your information, I did reach out to Senator Britz and asked him what the earliest that could, that could go to the legislature. It would be all, a, a local bill would, could be presented at the short session, which starts April twentieth of twenty twenty-six, just as an FYI. He said that was the earliest it, it would be presented.
Fair.
Well, I mean, Alderman Pril made, um, Alderman Pril made a motion, and I don't have a r, a problem with us not taking action on his motion. There's other bills or whatever has gone before the General Assembly has set there. I mean, he's made, um, a request. So with me, if I would make a request for a bill or approval from this board, I would want some action to be taken on it, whether it's yes or no.
Are you seconding his motion?
Oh, well, I don't know what Alderman, um, asked, I mean, um, Royal was going to make a motion or not.
Well, we have a motion on the table, so.
I mean, not a motion, but a second.
We, we need a second, or I'm going to say it's dead, so.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second? Are you staff clear on what the request is?
So it, has the motion been amended now, Alderman Pril? That the motion is to have staff bring back a resolution for the board's consideration? And also including in that resolution that the new board will reconsider the action?
Um, I, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, and Alderman Royal, is that your second? Okay.
Okay, um, let's have, is there any discussion?
I, I, I just think it's ironic that the two Aldermen that are not running for reelection is trying to place something on the agenda for the new board to do. So I'm going to tell you right now, I'm going to vote no for it. It's something the new board needs to address. And I, I just, it's just crazy for us to put something on the agenda in the future.
Well, as I've been sitting here pondering this diet, there has been lots of times motions made for new boards coming in to make the decision on them. And you know as well as I do.
That's what I'm saying. I think the new board needs to make the decision.
I'm just saying, an Alderman has, and even if I, I go out, if I make a motion for, as Alderman Pril did, for an action to be taken, and I'm out, hey, I made that motion, so as a board here now, I think we should make a, we as a board should make a decision whether or not we're going to say yes or no on it. And it's up to the new board whether they accept it or decline it. That's his right, because that's, that would be my right if I'm sitting here wanting to make a motion on, uh, uh, an action that I won't have done.
Okay. Any further discussion? Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
No.
Alderman Kinsey?
No.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
No. Motion fails. Anything else, Alderman Pril?
I have nothing further, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Royal?
Three items, if you would please, briefly. First of all, I certainly would like to thank my colleagues and, and, and other members of the staff for your support and your cards and, and your, um, messaging regarding the death of my sister. I appreciate that, and I'm very, very grateful for those of you that reached out and showed your concern and consideration. Thank you again. The other item is, uh, the second item is, I looked at the information that we received regarding the Redevelopment Commission uh, from the city clerk and the term of, uh, s, office. And I called her to ask so I could get some clarity on it. And she said that the term of office is for, um, five years. And I thought that it was something different with the staggered terms. So in light of that, I would like to ask, uh, the board if we could give the city manager and city attorney direction to bring a draft ordinance, excuse me, at the next meeting to reduce the term of the Redevelopment Commission from five years to three years. And that we would also include, uh, uh, to limit services to two back-to-back terms. When you look at our other boards within the city, that's, uh, generally how it operates, the three years. And the Redevelopment Commission is for five years. So if we did this, it would align the Redevelopment Commission more closely with the term of office with the other boards within the city. And I'm asking the board of, uh, if we would give that direction to, uh, the city manager and the city attorney.
Comments from other board members?
I, I'm supportive of that, um, consideration. Uh, yet, again, I, I wasn't a part of the discussion when the Redevelopment Commission was originally, um, established. I suspect that the longer terms and no limit to consecutive terms might have been in, intentional at that time only because you, I think, for an entity such as a Redevelopment Commission, you're looking to establish some stability, um, initially. Um, but it has been, I think, a sufficient amount of time has passed since it was originally established um, that it makes sense, uh, to maybe bring the, the terms of office and the, um, the, limiting the consecutive terms um, to bring that more in line with, um, our other boards and commissions. So I'd, I'd be supportive of that request.
That's two. Anyone else?
I, I concur.
That's three. Anyone else? Alderman Royal, would you like to make a motion so we can be formal on record?
Yes, sir. I would like to make a motion to ask the board if we could give the city manager and city attorney direction to bring a draft ordinance at the next meeting to reduce the term of the Redevelopment Commission from five years to three years and to limit, uh, consecutive terms to two years. And again, this would align the Redevelopment Commission more closely with the term of office for our, our other boards.
Alderman Royal, just want to make sure I'm, I'm clear on the motion. Are you setting the terms to two years, or are you setting it to two consecutive terms as a term limit?
Limit to two consecutive terms.
Okay. And additionally, what you might consider is, I think, the Redevelopment Commission is the only citizen board, appointed board, whose terms end in August. All the other boards terminate in, on June thirtieth. Is that something that you would also like? Is that something that you would also like to include in this draft ordinance to align them with the other boards?
Yes, if it would align with the other boards within our city.
I'm clear. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Why is the reason, or is there a reason why the redevelopment commission served a five-year?
So I would, from the information I've learned from Mr. Davis back when the redevelopment commission was being formulated, there was a desire at that time, as Alderman Prill alluded to, to create some stability and recognizing that redevelopment is something that does not happen overnight. So I think the reason why the terms appear to be longer than our appointed boards is to give those commissioners an opportunity, one, to acquaint themselves with the status of redevelopment at the time that they're appointed, and give them an opportunity to get some traction and hopefully see their efforts come to fruition during their term.
So you feel that a five-year term in this particular board is better for the redevelopment commission than a three-year term?
It certainly was at the time that the redevelopment commission was constituted.
And when was that?
I think they first started in 2018, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so we've had time for traction and adjustment since 2018. And then it would also provide opportunity for other members of our citizens to be able to bring also something to the table or add to it, or the expertise in one of the areas in redevelopment. That was my thought.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
No.
Alderman Kinsey?
No.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
No.
The last item. I am really, really excited about the progress at Henderson Park and the amenities that our park will provide to our citizens. And in light of that, I would like to further invest in Henderson Park in completion of some items that need to be completed through AARP funding. And so I'd like to make a motion to reallocate my AARP funds for enhancement of Henderson Park and to provide sod at Henderson Park multipurpose field at $20,000, to provide irrigation at Henderson Park multipurpose field for $10,000, to provide a scoreboard at Henderson Park multipurpose field for $10,000, and a scoreboard at Henderson Park baseball field for $6,000. And then lastly, I'd like to allocate $10,000 to improve the aesthetics at the Evergreen Cemetery by replacing a fence there at the cemetery.
Does that have to be a motion? Yes, sir. Do you have a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll second that one. Okay. Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All of those, do you need a roll call vote on this? Or are you gonna bring back a budget amendment, or how are we doing this? This is? Roll call? Okay. Roll call vote, starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Thank you. Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Anything else tonight?
That will be all, Mayor.
Alderman Astor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just got a couple of quick things. You answered the question about the scope of world change. Speaking of AARP funds, I've been approached about some roof damage at the old, I mean, at the old fire station, currently the Fireman's Museum, and I would like to allocate $3,000, not to exceed $3,000, for roof repair to that building.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Anything else?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, one more thing. I've had a conversation, just to be transparent here, I've had a conversation with Zeb about this, but I wanted, I wasn't able to get ahold of you, Mr. City Manager. I'm concerned about those three little homes on, is it Jones Street? Is that the address, or are they?
Wall Bell.
Wall Bell and the Drive. I mean, these things have been complete now. I would be getting close to guessing near a year, maybe not, but they're not occupied yet. And I built those houses for someone to have a home. Now, I understand that HUD is holding things up.
No, you want me to take this one?
Sure.
It's that white office right over there on the corner called Twin Rivers Opportunities. They're the ones that manage the voucher program for HUD for this area. They are the ones that's not giving the Housing Authority three vouchers so people can move in those houses.
Why? Do we have a clue?
We've had multiple meetings about it, and other than power?
Oh, yeah. No, that's it.
That's about all I can take.
I hope the press picks up on this one. Shame on Twin Rivers Opportunity to let three brand-new homes, I don't mean shake my finger at you, three brand-new homes to sit unoccupied for almost a year.
Well, if you really wanna add some context to it, Twin Rivers Opportunity was given, I don't wanna quote a number, but they were given a lot of vouchers for people from Trent Court that were flooded during Hurricane Florence. Very few of those vouchers were actually used. So Twin Rivers Opportunities got vouchers because of the vacancies at Trent Court and the same housing authority that got them those vouchers had asked for three of them, and they refused to give them to them.
Again, I hope the press picks up on this. Shame on them. Shame on them for not, for not, we built homes to give somebody an opportunity to have a house to live in. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't pay for those out of my AARP money for them to sit vacant for a year. That's all I've got to say. Thank you for, Mr. Mayor, for answering that question.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Kinsey, new business?
Nothing too much, sir.
Alderman Best?
Yes. George, Mr. Childs, I'm so glad that you're still here. Can you please come forth? I, I did, I have some dilemmas that I've been getting a lot of phone calls from residents within the Lake Tyler community, and they're inquiring about the roads over there, when they're gonna get, the new phase of the roads is gonna get paved, and also when would the traffic lights be put in? Now, I know in the past, we have been working with you when Matt Luntain was here, we have had conversations and even with Foster, that we've had conversations about when were they going to put in a traffic signal there. Now, I say that to say this, can you please update the citizens that live within the Lake Tyler, Washington Post Road, Highway 43, and let them know what, if you have any updated information or whatever? Because, you know, it was said by Mr., I'm gonna pronounce his name, it's Ruiz or Ruse or whatever his name, however he pronounces it, that I, all the women have not done anything I don't support, I'm not, I don't support my citizens' award five, and I'm not working for the citizens. And before, you know, he should have his facts together before he opened his mouth and make comments like that about me. So could you update the citizens and let them know that we have been working on this, the city and myself and you and everybody else that's involved with the city on this project?
I can provide, let me do this in two parts. So this would be the completion of the paving. Over the last four to six weeks, we have had our inspector and our assistant director meet on site with the paving contractor for the developer. So the paving contractor was looking at the streets that needed the additional top coat. That was our old street standard when that was originally done. And they had worked up pricing for everything north of Lake Tyler Drive to Gracie Farms. So that would be basically all of the, all of the phases that are totally built out. We do not have a date for that paving yet, as that is a contract between the developer and the paving contractor, but we're at a position that I believe we are closer than we have been in a long time to get these residents to some, some point of completion in that area. So we're, we're working towards that. As soon as I know of a date that's given to me by the developer or the contractor, I'll certainly share that with the board. As for the traffic signal at Olivia and Washington Post Road, so I just got confirmation this afternoon from MCDOT that the agreement was on the agenda for the Board of Transportation in, at the end of August. And they received confirmation that the agreement was approved. Now, it needs to be signed by the developer, too. But the requirements of that agreement require them to install the signal at Olivia and Washington Post Road at the beginning of construction of the proposed townhomes.
That's fantastic.
So, so that agreement was received today by the local office from the board, so in Raleigh.
Okay.
So that is as up-to-date as we can be, and certainly if I have any more updates, I'll certainly share them.
That is great news, and I'm pretty sure the resident soul will highly appreciate that, to hear that information. Thank you. That's all.
Okay.
I'm not finished yet.
Oh, I thought you said that was all. Sorry.
No problem. No, yes, I am. I'm not gonna comment on that. Thank you.
Okay. Just a comment about, I really wish Mr. French would have hung around. Mr. French that spoke during Petition of Citizens tonight has emailed a lot of people, probably dozens of times, about his situation with his home. I'm not sure, but I don't believe he's come before this board under Petition of Citizens with his issues before. So I don't know what caused him to come tonight, but his request to have extra minutes, anybody that comes before the board can make a case that what they wanna talk about should require extra minutes. So that's the reason I voted no to allow him that extra time, even though he probably got an extra minute after he was not supposed to be speaking. So that's all I have to say. Under new business, do we need a closed session?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask one more question, please?
Sure.
If you're in charge of Twin Rivers.
It's a HUD entity, but there is a board that operates this local chapter.
Are they local?
Yes, they are.
The board's local?
Yes, they are.
Do you know who the chairman of that board is?
I do.
Would you please send me that phone number?
Be happy to.
Thank you.
Do we need a closed session?
Would an invitation to have representative of Twin Rivers to address the board would be appropriate?
Yes.
To explain why there has been such a delay?
Well, not only in that, but all the other vouchers as well. Yeah, I'm open to that.
Sure.
They might not want to come.
We can invite them. Is that what you'd like to do?
Well, I'm just raking down Mr. Fossum's bill.
Well, I think it's a good idea. Let them, let them answer the questions.
Anybody opposed to that?
No.
Okay. Mr. Manager, can you handle that?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Do we need a closed session?
Yes, sir. Pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A5, we need to discuss the potential acquisition of real property.
Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Settle it, Mr. McCracken.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We are in closed session. We are back in open session.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned.